One minute.
What's up, Paul?
This is what they do.
Could be singing.
There it is.
I had a family, I had family. I've just been all day there and so I'm a little bit.
It's ready to go.
We gotta get my emotions.
Yeah, it's a.
Mr. City, we're gonna call this meeting over. And since the mayor's here, I need to kinda explain to everybody who doesn't know him. He disagrees on the issue because. Firstly, is that we've gotta have four people stay in the room and keep the court open. So if you need to stretch your legs or something, we need four council people to stay in the room. So if you need to stretch your legs or something, you can do whatever you want to do. You can have a walk around, especially if Sarah can't be comfortable. As long as you stay in a room, you have four people that will work. One of us can be out of the room. What we need, so we're gonna try to get through this so that we're not here until midnight. Once Matt gets here, he'll raise up two of us can be out of the room with the rest of them, so. And about halfway through, once we get through the Old Testament, we'll take a break. So just please keep in mind that there's gotta be four of us here for now. For the new guys and ladies, there's all these different funds sitting there and then we'll throw them one at a time. We would ask that, we'd ask everybody, hold the questions for that fund until after these does complete the fund. Because he's got, the way he wants to present this and interrupt him in the middle, he's fun. We'll go along, at the end of the fund, he's very. And at the end of it, end of the program, if you have any questions about anything that comes up. If you didn't cover, or you see something else in there or something that you said you wanted clarification. If you send an email to Tim. And Tim will need an answer and the way it gets answered too is it goes out to everyone in the council. He'll be out of town next week, so it won't be, probably won't get answered next week, but if he answers, plenty of answers in the middle of the budget. So you all can, so that if you've got a question more than likely, the rest of the council may have the same thought. So you send in a question, that question's gonna get answered and it's gonna help everybody. And there's gonna be questions that come up after tonight, we all, we, there always is. Talk about the break halfway through, you know, walking around the room. And just remember one thing, and it's important, this is a, this is a work in progress. This is not anything that's carved in stones throughout the year because there are a bunch of budget adjustments that happen within the year. Because they're adjusting the budget because of what was on the original document, something has changed. So please keep that in mind. And the other one is, just to make sure everybody's clear. I'm gonna ask Tim, explain to us how this document came to be, what the process has been. Cause it wasn't made in vacuum. So he's gonna explain to you what the role of the directors, the chiefs has been to get to this document. And I say, we're gonna, we're not discouraging anybody from answering, asking questions. But if we miss something, please send it to Tim and he'll be able to answer it. I said, everybody will get that answer.
For sure.
All right.
Tim, one quick reminder, that it is being livestreamed on YouTube, so we could need you talking to your microphones. Then you can hear each other just fine, make sure the green light is on.
When you go to talk?
That'll help us broadcast on YouTube and they can hear you, because if not, they won't be able to hear you.
So leave them on or off?
You can leave them on, you can leave them on.
Yeah, at all times.
That would be easier than you have to get your remote.
Okay, so. The city budget, as Vice Mayor Byrne talked about, is, is a living, breathing document. I mean, it's constantly moving, it's constantly churning every month. You see supplements, budget adjustments, things happen through the year of it. So this is the baseline for us to do a budget, but we try to stay within the parameters, we're not setting parameters of a budget. Then it comes back to council on the supplement out of the fund. We can't go to the fund balances and just move money. It has to come to you for approval and explanation why we do that. But it is, it is our baseline to how we operate the city. So starting with, starting with just an overview of how this, this document's put together. We started the month of January. That's when our budget season starts. And in January, we have, all the inter-service funds are put together and reviewed by me and the department head over those inter-service funds. So what an inter-service fund is, are funds that support the operating departments. And that affect the operating departments. For instance, Public Works Administration, that's Paul and his administrative office over in Public Works and the secretaries and Kerry in there. They, they make up the administration of PWA. So that budget is distributed to all the other public works departments. Stormwater, water, west water, sanitation, those all get spread out in those departments, golf. And then, then we have the life and health budget. That's our health insurance, we're self-insured pool. We have a, we have Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we use their network, their Blues Network. And then they adjust our claims. We have the document that sets our guidelines on for claims for the health benefits plan. And that affects everybody in the city, so we, we do that budget so that that can go into all the operating budgets in the city. We do the risk management budget, we're self-insured there as well. For the life and health, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar SIR for every, every claim. And then we have an aggregate, it's around ten million dollars or so. That has an aggregate coverage for the city. And then for the risk management, we have the risk, the workers comp. Which we have an actuary that helps us determine what our needs are, what are reserves, if they're uncurbed and not reported, all the IBNR. And then they set what the, what the premiums are for all the departments. So they gotta know all this stuff before they can, the departments get that. And then the fleet, the fleet budget, more important, they're all important, but the fleet budget, we gotta set a fuel cost. I sat down in January with the fleet manager, we look at the trends of fuels and we gotta kinda come up with an idea. This year's almost a million dollars for fuel. I remember there was a day in time that was four hundred thousand since I've worked here. It's a million bucks throwing fuel through all the vehicles in the city. So, so we do the fleet budget based on historical use of the departments, on how much maintenance they have on vehicles, what we think the part of it would be. Cause once again, we run our own system, we use, we use NAPA as a park store. So we actually have a park store inside of fleet. And it is run by NAPA, it's a NAPA store. So anyway, so fleet, but so those are the four main budgets that are done in January. And those budgets then, and then we do a revenue projection. With TAT is people, primarily with Frank Chin, who has a spreadsheet that is, if there's a double PhD, it's a double PhD spreadsheet. That looks at every revenue in the city and prognosticates what those revenue projections are. Frank used to not miss the revenue projections by less than one percent. Those days were, you can't project revenue, NAPA scan anymore, it's just too difficult because there's too much instability in, in the markets these days. So anyway, we do a revenue projection, and I'll talk about that in a second. And after that's done, then his whole office takes that information, puts it all together into operating, to all operating accounts, all the operating departments. All those numbers are pre-programmed in there. And then they take it, and then the department heads in the month of March, including spring break. I'd grant it. I try to get them done before spring break, actually, but not all of them do. So they then submit their operating budgets. Normally, I will send out a budget, explanation of budget, directive, I guess, maybe, to the departments. And say, I want you to keep it within certain criteria, right? And this is the first year that I did not do that. I said, you know what, these people are brilliant people. They understand the market, we talk about this, we have staff meetings, we talk about this all year long. I am not gonna do that this year. I want you guys to put, to submit a budget based on what your real needs are. Fluff it, up short yourself, give us a legitimate budget, a reasonable budget. And lo and behold, it's amazing, what a great job that all these department heads, these operating departments did. And I'll talk about that more later, you'll see that as we go through this. And so once they submit, then all those budgets come to a review team, which is myself, Vaughn, Ryan, and this year it's Paul Street of PWA. It's kind of the four leadership. The secession in the city is, that's the secession with all of us, the C four senior leaders in the city. And, and then we review, we review every budget, we put check on side each one. And we review every one of those budgets in detail with the ruler, line by line. And we work through those budgets, deviations in there. And we're gonna be asking them why, and so we review those budgets with those department heads. And then after that, it is all put together, and this is the month of May, we come together and review budget with people. And then it's submitted as a, as a public hearing in a public. Overall, it's kind of, especially for the new folks, that's, that's how this, this sausage is made. A lot of grinding, that's how it's made. All right.
You said something, this is a needs base, needs.
Yeah, it's always, I think we've always operated that way. Some cities do zero-based budgeting, and that's, that is, that's like having a start from ground zero every single year. And I've never, I've been in a city that did that, and it took like extra two to four months. And you just, I paid a consultant a half million dollars and I'm not sure what you accomplished at the end of that. Okay, so I think, just starting with my message before we dive right in here, is the theme really is the cost of operating the city continues to rise. We, we see from March to March, we saw a three point eight percent increase in the consumer price index for the southwest region that we reside in. Overall, for the year two thousand twenty-three, we saw a four point five percent increase in cost of living in the southwest region of the United States. So the cost of, the cost rises and we see that in our supplies accounts. We see that in our contractual accounts. It is definitely, it's definitely, overall, as we look at the overall numbers, we have, we have last year a hundred, operating a hundred and ninety-five million, one seventy-four, zero, zero, eight. This year, we have an operating budget of a hundred and ninety-six billion, four forty-two, oh twenty-five. So a little over a one point three billion dollar increase in the operating budget year over year. So as a general overview, we see sales taxes flattening, so to my revenue projection. Cause the revenue projection drives this whole thing. I did, I'm the outside enterprise fund operated by utility fees. This is driven by what the sales tax is like, it's gonna do. And I talked to the other metro cities, fairly great detail about this. And a lot of cities are projecting flat. A lot of cities are, are flat. And some cities are going basically, when I say flat, what that means is that they're projecting next year's revenue to be the same as this year's revenue. I'd say that's a predominant share of it. Some of it are, uh. Oklahoma City, I think, is actually, is, they were, at one point, they were one percent over, but I think they backed off that number. Bethany's flat, Shawnee is revenue protection at one percent. Hell Reno's flat, Yukon's flat. So. I think a lot of the city managers, we try to talk to one another about the revenue projection. There's no one saying it's gonna go up, right? I mean, one city says it's going up one percent, it's not very much. So I don't think any of us feel great about seeing the economy and seeing that we're gonna see our sales tax go up a lot. If you think about all our sales tax, my, my reports to the council, the sales tax has been really flat for the last odd six months. We had the one month it was up a little bit, but it's flat. And you know, that's the theory of elasticity, you know, impacting us, cause we have finally, we've been talking about this for a year. But we have reached that point where CPI, cost of living, has gone up so much. You only can, you only spend so much income, you can only pay so much for steak so many nights a week. And you finally hit that threshold and that ceiling. And I, I think, you know, my fear is that we have hit that, that ceiling because we've seen exponential growth with CPI for the previous two years. We're not seeing that right now. Not to say it couldn't happen, cause the cost, the cost of living's not going down. So. So what we did as a staff, and we all agreed on this, is we looked at the revenue projection and we decided that we would average the last two years. Okay, so two previous fiscal years, we averaged those two numbers together, and that is our revenue projection for the year. So when you see any kind of report that, it would be a projection, where this dollars come from in here is the projection. And I think that's, I feel really good about that, I think it protects us. We see a downturn in the economy, we have some good fund balances, so we're really fortunate. Because during that uptick, we put money back, we put the rainy day money back that we needed to put back. In a lot of different funds. And so we, we are prepared if the economy does go south. But at a two-year average, I really feel good about that. I think that gives us at least, like in the general fund, probably a half million dollar cushion in there. To say, what, if it was the same year over year, it'd be about a half million dollars difference. So that's the first thing to point out. And let's go to, let's go to, um. The general fund, this should be, is this the first page, I guess?
Zero, zero, nine, or?
We start with O nine.
I can run it.
Well, the budget book.
I got you, Tim.
Give me the page. And if, see what we did is, O ten is really the operating account for the city, and then we have O nine. It's a sales tax that came away after, yes.
Page four is where.
It does not make sense to do O nine without doing O ten first.
Page ten.
Page ten?
If you look at the top of the ten corner, and I'll tell you what, what fund number we're talking about.
Okay, so let's go to page ten.
That's, yeah, that's what I was talking about there.
So that's the general fund fund balance, that's where this building is operated out of in, in the quarter. So in across the street, Neighborhoods in Action. And so let's start with those funds. So you can see on that page that the revenue. You can see the revenue projection's forty-six million, two ninety-two, and it's about half a million dollars less than, and then.
So page four, the, uh, page four, the bottom, of the PDF, it's page ten on the PDF. Page four on the bottom of the document, it's page four, on the, in the PDF, it's page ten, sorry.
This looks at the last three years. And you can see, based on total revenue that's estimated, just for the regular, it's like TAT's group is estimating. But we're looking at about half a million dollars less than what we think we're gonna come in at over twenty-three, twenty-four. Now, when you look at the, the bottom line to the, you see the net income, the loss. Last year, it looks like we lost one point one million, that's really not what happened. What we did is we moved two and a half million from that fund over into O nine, which is where capital's at. So we put some money aside to do renovations on this building. So actually, we give up that two and a half million, so we actually really made one point four seven. So this year's a little different, so we, we did. We did include, and this is something we haven't done a lot of in this process, but I think this is important. Cause it gives you, as a council, a much more realistic view of what these budgets will look like when you're voting on the cost of living increase. So I actually put in, I put a three percent cost of living increase into these budgets, so you'll see these throughout the city. And that's about two hundred thirteen thousand.
And just in, in general, revenue's flat. And I'm not jumping ahead, but I noticed that every department had an increase in budget over last year, with the exception of yours.
Yeah.
And so as we go along, it would be helpful to me if you'd kind of explain to me where we're gonna make up that difference. If revenue's flat and costs go up, where are we getting the money from? And it looks like in this case, the unreserved fund balance is what we're gonna tap into.
We have an unreserved fund balance of twelve million dollars. We probably won't spend all that money, cause when people quit, it takes time to fill those roles. So we never spend as much as we spend over time too. So there's cushion there, and we have, we have a run, almost twelve million dollars in fund balance. And if you're hitting it for five hundred thousand, or what the eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, it's gonna last a long while.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, going to scope those, if you're really interested, you can look at all those revenue projections. That's where all the money comes from, the general fund. Then you go to what would be page seven on the bottom. And that starts into all the departments in the general fund, and it's easier just to look at them from here. It's really. See for. You can see there's very little, there's very little change in any of these budgets. Once there is a change, we're gonna go over those. Human resources. Very little change, most of the change is really just the cost of living. Because these departments operate in such small numbers, cause they're so small in nature. City Attorney. Almost actually went down a little bit from his limited budget. I'm not sure why. Community Development, this is Matt Summers. The big number in here would be for him is there's the contract, his contractual rep, a hundred eighty-two thousand. That's because within his contractual, there is a hundred eighty-two thousand for comprehensive plan update. Which we've talked about for the last couple of years. And twenty-three is in his contractual as well. Vision twenty-three is working with Spencer to work on Twenty-third Street. It's about fifty-six thousand is what the quote is. And that's half, because it's actually over a hundred thousand to do the, to have a consultant in order to do that. So those are in his budget. Parks and Rec. And that's in there. Finance. We've got TAT at five hundred dollars in supplies. Is that it for him? The street department, remember last year, we added two additional personnel in the street department to help evolve the parks that we're building. And then we contracted some of that out, and we'll get to that, where we spent that over in the Wellness Center. And we moved some, we moved some of these parks and rec people around a little bit to just, I wanted them, I didn't wanna pay people, I didn't wanna pay for payroll, almost really have to, out of one twenty-three. One twenty-three is the Parks and Rec, that's where we're landing the twenty percent sales tax increase in four oh one five, roughly a million dollars. I don't want that going to personnel, we wanna put that in the parks, not the personnel. So we, we moved, still a little movement, but we had a place to move them to, so. Um, within. Within the street department also, they are, they are requesting a pavement management, evaluation system to help them look at roads and rank the roads. I think that is, it's ninety thousand dollars, but I think it's gonna be very well spent. And actually, we moved it out to O sixty-five, they put it in there, and then we moved it over to O sixty-five. Animal welfare. We are actually fully staffed now, we were for a little while yet, when the workers come again. But, and things work a lot better, animal welfare, we're fully staffed, so. And this port. Neighborhood services, so number ten. Ten Bash fifteen. Neighborhood services, which is code enforcement, and then Terry Craft out of Little, a little piece of that. There were, I think that's where it's important to point out, especially for the new council members, where we have, we have a Boys and Girls Club that we contribute a third of the ninety-two, seventy-five thousand dollars, and that's a country estates elementary school. And then we also have a, a Boys and Girls Club that we don't have to contribute to, it's funded by Boys and Girls Club at Telstar. And that services Oklahoma City Public Schools in Creche. And then the, the school system has a latchkey program at the other schools that they, they really, they really promote that. It's a very high-quality program. We have some tutoring that we've been doing at the Neighborhoods in Action. And we've had a grant to pay for that, we're still seeking grant money, but it's fairly expensive, it's around fifty thousand dollars. You'll see that over in O sixteen when we get there. And you're gonna have to forgive me if I, when I say O sixteen, you can, O sixteen is the reimbursed projects. So we'll go over that when we get there. Next one is the IT department. Only real change in the IT department, or. We have technology, we're gonna talk a lot about technology, this is just the basics of IT, there's no changes over there. You go to emergency operations, which is under eighteen. And we have, we added a lead dispatcher, we, we didn't add the dispatcher. What we've done is on all the shifts, we wanna make sure that there is someone that's in charge of it. So Becky Bruce is our, is our dispatcher, lead dispatcher, she's our supervisor, and she's got a lot of years' experience, she's really good. And she.
Three shifts, right?
Three shifts, so, well, no, three.
They work seven things, and there's two shifts per day. And then there's different crews, cause there's some pretty bad weekends.
Yeah, you got the weekends, so it really almost creates, there's three shifts, but they're on multiple days. So you really need four supervisors.
I just noticed there were three shift directors, and that's why I just assumed there were three shifts.
Yeah, so we needed to cover weekends, so like the fourth lead. Now, they, they're just regular dispatchers, but when, but they serve in kind of a quasi-supervisor role. Next page is swimming pools. And just quickly on the swimming pools, just a little bit. And just quickly on the swimming pools, just a little bit different this year. Swimming pools money has always kind of gone into the general fund and just, everything that goes into the general fund, sixty-two percent of that goes to police and fire. And so, sixty-two percent of their revenue is going really other places, and it's, it's about two hundred and four thousand dollars. And we really need money in the swimming pools to support the swimming pools, to support the liners with equipment, wages, and all that stuff. So, we made, we moved that last year, so that money will go into one-twenty-three. Once again, one-twenty-three is where Parks and Rec's at. So, that money will go in there, and we'll have some access to the swimming pool liner. We have been saving for four years.
Four years.
And then, four years, we've been saving money because it's so expensive. It's going to be what's our, over a million. And now, it's for new liners, well, over a million dollars. So, we didn't have that kind of money, so we, we've created a little bit more, a, a capital fund, so to speak, for them. So, that is in there. Next one is communications. They're being fully staffed. There's not any changes there. That's, we have an excellent, Josh Ryan does an excellent job. He has very good people. Let's go to Mr. Bundy. That's twenty-four. Brandon, as we talked about the other night at council meeting, we added a engineering project manager, so that he has two engineering project managers now. The reason it looks like we haven't added anyone is that we are, we are going to try something different in the, the janitorial services for this building. We're going to go with Jan Pro. It's, it's, what's our price on Jan Pro? Fifteen thousand, yeah, fifteen thousand five hundred versus paying full-time person. We won't get trash taken out every day, but it'll be a couple of times a week. We still have another janitor that can help back up, and Brandon's going to give this a test. It's going to save us, set sixty, seventy thousand dollars, roughly fifty, sixty, seventy, somewhere in there, depending on how long they've been here. So, we have an opening, so it's a good time to try it out. Plan review and third-party inspections is in there. So, there was sixty thousand. We moved some of that over to ninety fifty, which is the hospital authority discretionary because those inspections are, went to Centrillian. So, we're using outside inspectors to help us inspect at Centrillian. And then something else that he added is the update of engineering standards for fifty thousand dollars. That's something that Oklahoma City and Norman just finished with, and it's something we need to do is update our engineering standards. How long's it been, Brandon?
Years.
Okay.
Too long.
Long time. So, we're going to, we put that in for this year. Next one is the senior center. I've read it enough that I added two thousand dollars to supplies, so for projects. What'd you say? I'll make them happy. We'll, we'll give you credit for that, Rita.
They did not update it.
Yeah. No, we wouldn't give you credit. And that is everything in the general fund. Now, we're going to back up to oh-nine.
So, Ms. Rita, you see, those are like all of the, the generalized pages. If you want to flip through, you can see all the detail behind those as well, the everything that he was kind of going through. So, the two pages you're looking at, that's like the super summarized versions. If you want to keep flipping through, you'll see all the detail that rolls up to those summarized ones.
Are we moving page thirty-two? Actually, we're moving page two.
So, yeah, go back to page two.
Back up to the top.
Two of the PDF.
Yeah. Two of the PDF, page two. It should say general government sales tax. You're going to see on the CD screen. Is zero, zero nine. So, this is back in, it seems like yesterday when we did this, really two thousand and twelve. Anyway, in two thousand and twelve, we were in a position where, no, seventeen, eighteen, I'm sorry, not two thousand and twelve. Eleven, twelve's when this fund started, and it was from a sales tax increase and a little bit of it went in here. And then in seventeen, eighteen is when we went for the seventy-five cent increase because we were pretty much broke at the city. We, we, the police, fire, and the general government, we really didn't have enough money to operate. And so, we went for a sales tax vote to the public and spent, spent the summer talking to people, and overwhelmingly, they supported that increase. And so, what that does is it, it gives us a second general fund, so to speak. Okay? You've got the general fund that covers all these departments. In the past, all the capital, see, we didn't talk about any capital because the capital in the past would have to come out of that oh-ten account. And you can already see that oh-ten account is just a break even, you know, within a less than half percent. So, that includes capital. So, what we did is we used this oh-oh-nine to cover my department, the old general government account, and capital outlay for all the general fund operating departments. So, when you look at that, you can see that there's three point one million in expenditures and three point two in revenues. Is that one a better one for you? So, you can see that, what you can't see is what, what happened when we started this budget is there was about, there was one point five million dollars in requests. So, on top of, we, we ended up putting in, we ended up approving capital of nine hundred seventy-eight thousand. They requested one point five million. So, we, we reduced that by five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, which pretty much balanced this budget.
Is that why there's such a drop-off? The, the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four was, say, seven million. And in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're expecting to spend three million, three point one million. So, there's a, what's the cause for that? Only three million and a half?
Well, two and a half million of that, you can look back on the revenue side, came in from the other funds. So, that looked like there was five million there. It really wasn't. There was more like three million there, three something, two and a half short of that. So, that's almost three million. And then the five million, three third of three, let's see, that was a capital outlay. Remember, is that ice storm? Keely, you have that?
I'll find it here.
We had an ice storm blown in twenty-two, twenty-three, three hundred.
Oh, it was the, it was the payoff of the sewer construction.
Ah.
That's what it was.
Okay. So, we floated, we floated the payoff of the sewer construction because we were, the sewer treatment plant. We paid it in part of it. So, that's a pass three dollar.
And on page one, under materials and supplies, one fifty-four, seven twenty-nine. And then under right, it says under city manager, it says twelve thousand eight twenty-nine. Is that because the materials and supplies we're talking about is bigger than just the city managers? Those numbers do match.
Okay. Tell me where we're at.
Just on page one, under expenditures, materials and supplies, one flat floor, seven twenty-nine. And then the inside racket, under city manager.
Right. And they have to go to page two as well.
Yeah. So, you have to add.
Sorry.
Fourteen, ten, which is general government and the city manager to get those numbers.
Especially page two, there's seventy-eight thousand.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, if you, if you look over on the, on page two, you'll see the, the supplies as well. Where is it?
The general government supports all the departments in the general fund.
And?
And then the city man, that's the city manager's budget.
I have one follow-up question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
On, I noticed that this is like assistant city manager funded twenty-five percent PWA, ten percent hospital authority. And I noticed throughout the budget, there are areas where staff salaries are funded by the hospital authority. I know there have been some questions raised that whether or not staff can actually legally pay through the hospital authority.
In reading the trust indenture, in my opinion, yes, the hospital authority can pay for certain wages for certain people because there are certain people specifically named in the trust agreement, in the trust indenture for the hospital authority. An example, Tim is listed as the general manager. I am listed as the attorney. Sarah is listed as the secretary. And it also gives the general manager within that the authority to bring people in as necessary. And so, there can be others that could be necessary that would need to be, that could be drawn from that as well. But those three are specifically named in the trust indenture itself. So, those three, a certain percentage of their salary could, could come out of the trust indenture or out of the hospital authority funds to pay for those three positions.
And has or.
Stated in the trust indenture.
And there's been many, not just Dawn, there have been multiple attorneys over the years who move the same way.
One other question, that's where I was talking about the city managers, I guess, area. I've noticed some legal fees, there's thirty, how about thirty-one hundred dollars. It doesn't get us very far as, as far as the legal fees. So, let's say you did need to utilize external attorneys. Do you then at that point have to go to other department budgets to be?
Yeah, I look at where, where that attorney is working. If they work for the hospital authority or within, you know, like eminent domain, or if they're, whatever its term means of that question that they're working on, that would go to that budget. That's, it wouldn't flow through here.
And one other question from, after this last one, of this area. I know, I haven't had a chance to look at the contracts that we just got access to yet, so I will have some follow-up questions when I do review them. But just generally, those contracts that are signed by the city manager, what area within the budget do those come out?
All over the place. Anything less than a hundred thousand dollars is, so they come from all kinds of different funds all over the city. That's why originally it was so hard to find those because they're everywhere. So, that'll be scanned them in. Anything I sign gets scanned in, will be in those, those folders that they follow. Okay. And then really, so you can see the capital outlay that supports this. City manager has the miscellaneous equipment, Neighborhood Services. Code enforcement has ice truck. You can see IT, we'll come back to them, engineering, and the senior center. But really, what we, when we got into this budget, we saw there was one point five million dollars, one million five hundred eighty-eight five hundred. Most of those requests had to do with, had to do with hardware software maintenance. And so, we tapped Ryan in IT with figuring out what departments those were coming from. But this is designed to support the general fund, the operator of the building. It's not designed to, to support public works and police and fire. And so, we couldn't, we can't subsidize it in that way as this fund. One, I mean, we would be another million dollars upside down. But practice, you know, right, we should do that, that they even support their infrastructure. And we know they're growing infrastructure, especially in the police department, public works has got significant infrastructure, G I S, and all the city works and all the things that they're doing with all these cameras and body cams and all this. So, Ryan, why don't you just very briefly go through how we divvied up?
Yeah. So, Tim mentioned the hardware software.
Now, was most, this was all, this was really more the, it's a combination.
It is a combination. So, I'll talk mainly about the capital item request. So, Tim mentioned inter-service funds or inter-service departments. IT's always kind of been a hybrid where it wasn't quite set up like a service department where all of its costs are spread all the way out. So, over the years, those costs have all centralized into the general government department. Well, as costs go up and as they need equipment to support the entire city, instead of just taking those out of general fund, they said, okay, what is the best way to split up these costs where they're actually incurred? And so, they looked at user counts in each department, and then they divided up those costs and spit, spent, split those costs out per department. So, police, we get a share, fire, we get a share, PWA, we get a share. All departments would get a share rather than having it all just come out of one place. That kind of makes sense? Yep. And so, that was done for the capital purchases. And then later on, when we get to technology fund, we'll talk about some other expenses that were split up as well.
Ryan, there's a, an expense in there, I think it's two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for computers. Is, is that, how many years does an average?
Great question.
Person wait to get a new computer?
Great question. So, we've, we've looked at that over the years, and we've done a really good job of getting our hardware up to where it's all maintained and it's all supported with software updates for the cybersecurity process. And so, with that, they're looking at a four-year replacement schedule. So, every four years, people get new hardware on their desktop.
So, it'd take about a million dollars to give everybody in the city a new computer every year?
But the good news is we don't have to do that every year because we've got to split it out every four years. And so, some departments may have a bulk one year and then a lull the next year. But the good news is they have great technology, and it's all supported by the vendor. So, that way, if there is any vulnerabilities, they're patched because that's where the cybersecurity stuff comes in, where if there's a flaw in the system, they'll exploit it. So, they need to be up to date. Good question.
Okay. So, let's go to street and alley, number thirteen, should be on the page. Street and alley is a fund that we've had a long time, and it's where we get county fuel taxes and a little bit of commercial vehicle excise tax. And it's roughly five hundred, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. There's some interest in there. So, five thirty-three plus fifty-five in interest. And then you see the fifty thousand on the revenue transferring from one ninety-one. And so, one ninety-one is the water department. So, when a water leak occurs in the street, it tears the street, I mean, the street's running, you got to tear it all out, fix the water line, build it all back, patch the street, and so. Thirty-two.
Thirty-two of the, of the document, PDF.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Yep.
Thirty-eight, one forty-seven. Street alley, thirteen, street department. So, that, we put fifty thousand over there that transfers into this so that they have access to, to fix some streets. And then four hundred and seventy thousand, we put mid-state traffic in here. We have a, we have a street light account that we're going to look at that is really upside down, and it had mid-state traffic in there. We moved that over to this fund with those traffic signal maintenance and really street alley. We had some better place to fund that anyway. And we do crack sealing out of this account around town. You can see our crack seal, they do a great job, and then the hardwoods last a lot longer. You can compare us to fellow cities without naming names. You see our street is crack sealed, and the one across the street has potholes, not that big. Um and then, this is where, when we have street repairs, things happen, things buckle, cracks, washouts, you name it, this, we have four hundred and seventy thousand in here, and that's what the street department, this is where they have access. Now, if you look in the past, twenty-three, twenty-four, now we didn't spend a billion, it's one point one billion seventy-six thousand. That's prior years all rolled together. But you can see what we were doing, is we were having to use this fund to do signals and, and repave streets and flashers and school zones and, and matches and traffic studies and bridge replacements and street signs, which is, street signs is probably okay, but by adding the money, and you're gonna see this all through here, and we'll get really deep into it probably right after our first break. And that is in our own break. That is uh that is where we can start paying for this stuff that we need to be paying for. This is where we have capital improvement money allocated, capital one fifty-seven. That's where that four million or so goes in there and, and now we can start paying for them. Because this money is street, this money really needs to go for, for repairing the infrastructure. And it's expensive, what's it cost for a one concrete panel?
Thousands of dollars.
Yeah. So it's a good thing that they have this.
There's one, one item in there that I was questioning, it's a miscellaneous citywide thermal striping, that's road striping. And it's only, oh, twenty-nine thousand dollars, twenty-eight thousand.
That's what's left.
Is that, is that for the entire year?
That's what's left, and actually, I've got a new privilege engineering, they typically will be back of their contracts, like those uh that we use a problem, like we use for strapping, and so that's what's left from the project. That wasn't the entire town for us to budget, because these are last year, two hundred and thirty, so we've spent some of that money already. And obviously, we've got to be a budget planner, I think, and maybe to take care of some of the striking that's obviously problematic, major issues.
Okay, do you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, we, we used to do a lot of in-house striping. And what we started doing was, we got federal money with ODOT to hundred percent federal money to start striping. Now, most of those roads are our turn, so like Reno, Air Depot, examples. Uh we're working on an ODOT project to do that resurfacing, or that striping soon. And what we noticed was the hospitality district in particular. Warren, Peter Ver, Will Rogers, uh had been striped and they hadn't been striped for a very long time, and so it needs to be striped. So we're gonna roll the ODOT pricing in with that, that hospitality area and pay with the city funds. So we're really giving a lot of bang with the buck there. So, and, and what I hope to do on any striking job is that's overnight, so that no one notices. Just one day, you just realize, we have better strike.
Alright, thank you.
Can I ask?
I know Susan's thinking, but she's not.
I, I will say on, on uh Councilwoman D has been a big proponent of striping twenty-ninth street, and that is part of that project. It's coming, we, we.
That's what she's saying.
She's saying it's live, it's been done earlier, but uh.
That's look good.
That's look good now.
On, on the capital outlay for twenty-three, twenty-four, so the assumption should be that these projects are already complete.
The way that we price is, the assumption will be like as if it's all spent, yes.
All, all.
Spent, appropriated.
Right, and so that's how it rolls up into the estimated actual expenses. Yes, that's the way to follow it through. And if it doesn't, it could, well, you guys will vote to roll it then.
But it doesn't necessarily mean, for example, the specific project has met the end, we've only appropriated funds for it.
Yeah, it may not, yeah.
The work may be still.
Correct, correct.
Some of it might be engineering, yeah. And each year, once we're done with the budget, come, I don't know, what time will we do an Easter recon?
Hopefully July.
July, we'll do, we follow the Easter recon. We go through every single one of these capital items and we look and see what department has spent. And if they're finished with the project, we roll that money back to fund balance, if they're not, sometimes we have to supplement.
We ask them why, why aren't they, make them justify it, why is why?
And then on the capital outlay for twenty-four, twenty-five, under infrastructure, i- it's just very general, it doesn't have an itemized list. Is that because we don't have an idea of what those projects are?
We don't know what's been a buckle this summer in a hundred and ten pre-weather, we don't know what's gonna get washed out. So we, we just need money to, to fix it as it comes, build it, spend money.
If you look at twenty-three, twenty-four, there's a lot of this infrastructure, there's money there. It's the same concept, but we have large, it's actually a project from half a million to a million dollars every mile of street.
These are reports more so than new projects.
Correct.
Fourteen. Fourteen is the technology fund, this is funded by, I don't know, Ryan, how much on traffic tickets?
Say, this is funded partially through um a fee, a technology fee on citations all throughout the city. It's also funded through um surety bonds, false alarm fees and various other sources.
It's about three hundred and forty-one thousand. When we started this budget, they, their request is six hundred and eighteen thousand. So we cut two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars out of this budget, and it's still upside down a little bit. But this is where Ryan went in, and this is where we got into the hardware software maintenance. Let you go through that real quick.
I will. So if you look at the um next page, you'll see this box. And so this box represents half of the hardware and software maintenance contracts we have throughout the city. And so those contracts go to support everything from the software that builds the agenda to backup software, the software we're using right now to broadcast on um, on YouTube. All the cameras throughout the city, the maintenance for that system's in here. You can look down through that list and see that many of these systems are spread all throughout the city. And so this has obviously grown over the years as we've grown in technology infrastructure. And every, every year, some of these have escalators on them where they go up, and we do try to renegotiate those from time to time. But with that, this, this is half of it, the other half of this has been split out to all the departments. Much like we did the uh capital outlay for the technology department themselves, this hardware software maintenance was split out in the same manner.
So we distributed that to all the different departments, based, you guys based that on what formula, Ryan?
So that was based upon the number of active email users in each of those areas, those that have computers that use computers. So active directory licenses is the way that was split out.
So it's something that, you know, this fund at one point had multiple employees coming out of it. We have two part-time technicians coming out of it, actually, one of the wages is, everything in here has been spent primarily on hardware software maintenance. And capital outlay, you can see some of the projects that were in there over time.
Tim, each of these budgets, I can see that the revenue streams come from various sources. And I'm sure you guys have a process, how you figure out which revenue stream. But let's just assume that fines and forfeitures cratered this year, then they didn't generate any money. And you've got, you know, you're counting on six thousand dollars from them. Are you just out of luck?
You just find something to cut typically.
So what happens is that, in the bottom of that, you have five hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars in fund balance. We require the departments to have the five percent reserves, so we can set aside seventeen thousand, which is really a pretty small number. Something will probably need to increase over time. But that's what that money's for, is something craters. We, we try to balance these the best we can, but that fund balance is where you go to. And that would be a supplement, so that would come to council to approve.
And, and Tim has lots of measures citywide for in-the-event revenue stops coming in. He's got, he'll start holding positions and not failing positions.
We institute measures, we know this is happening, we institute measures to slow our spending down, we freeze positions, we slow down capital outlay, we slow down supplies. We've been there, that's.
We cancel travel and training.
This is a blessed budget to have some of the money we have, we haven't had that before. But we've lived, we've lived it, where we.
Without reserves, that would be.
Very low reserves, and that's.
The complement, the people that are in charge right now, I can tell you, eight years ago, when I started this kind of fund reserve for, there wasn't anything there, part of all, that's one thing, we as a group need to remember when we start negotiating, when they start negotiating with the unions, the unions are gonna pick at that fund reserve or the fund balance, and that's why it's critical during COVID. We, we did not lay off important workers.
No.
And we were able to do that, because we had to have a fund balance. And there's been things that have been instituted over the last several years about uh capital charges.
Yeah.
Putting money back each year.
We try to reserve money for big purchases and make them pre-planned, when the, they have a big spreadsheet of equipment and when is a sanitation truck, when's a fire truck, when's, when's a uh flusher truck, you name it, all this equipment. We look at those and see what their life expectancy is, and we expect those departments to start putting money away. And they'll put the money away for a track that like four, five years, it might cost a quarter million dollars.
There's not the fun.
How else to do that?
Even until he took over, that rarely occurred, because that's why the fire, particularly the fire department was in dire straits of needing fire trucks. They went in, created a lot of, and we start putting, basically a savings account for.
Yeah, we, it's, it's built into those software, the fund balances, but you can't even see them, they're even more in there than that. And you see the, you get these monthly reports from T and T that have the fund balances, that's an actual fund balance. And some of those are reserved in there, like the fire truck. So fire might have, they'll have more than actually, in this, they'll have more than is listed in the budget, because we're reserving stuff.
Fire truck costs a quarter of a million dollars, and take that up, want to get up in the budget.
Yeah, it's, you know, an engine is over a million, I think, a lot of, a lot of money for, for a lighter.
Good question.
Okay, next one is streetlight fees, this is an interesting fee that, that um we have, some cities have this, and this assessment was done before my time. And the reason this was done is because, because prior to this fund being created, this expenditure, and it's it's kind of gone, it's gone up over time, is, it had to come out of the general fund. So that was a direct expenditure right out of the general fund. We already see where the general fund is, it doesn't need to have, be getting hit for, for eight hundred thousand dollars. And so the council, the manager at the time, they instituted this fee schedule for streetlight fees. And that's for the Wayfair streetlights, we paid for all those, O G N E, and where's Chris at? We paid him a lot of money.
It's all his fault.
We paid a lot, we paid for the lights in the park, all that stuff costs money. And we originally put this in for the new people, it was like, we're getting fund wells, what's a streetlight fee? I want that street light out in my yard. But that's not how this works, you want a streetlight fee, you go call Chris over there and he can go, they can go get one put at their house and they'll get to pay for it on the utility bill. But, but this is a.
Room, ten hook.
Are we finishing the other questions?
Move to your turn.
Right. Let the minutes show that the mayor made it here, right on time, six thirty.
I have mayor's stuff to do.
So the streetlight fee is, is uh.
Thirty-five on the, on the document.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-five, page ten, yeah, thirty-five. Forty-one on the PDF. So the streetlight fee, we have been, and prior councils, it's like, let's make, let's start using this for what it's designed for, and that's paying our friends from O G N E to ride the streetlights. And so we have been doing that, and this is going down. I moved out of here, like I said, in mid-state traffic, and there were some improvements to trail lights that were in here that we moved out as well, that were requested, about a few thousand dollar for Mr. Bundy, and then eighty thousand dollars in mid-state traffic. So those have been moved to other places, primarily at O sixty-five. But, so even with that, right now, to do the street lights in Midwest City, the prices have gone up from O G N E, we are, we are spending seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and our revenue's six twenty-two. So on this pace, to answer Mark's question, will be, how long will that money last?
Five years, maybe four and a half?
I think for
Okay.
Four years before we have to start subsidizing these streetlight fees from somewhere else, or you guys, we have to decide if you can increase the price of the streetlight fees to, so that we have enough revenue. Or turn some lights on. But we're not requesting that right now, we just get a water rate, I'm not requesting that, I'm just putting you guys on.
But we do have four years to make a decision.
You got four years to make a decision. Or O G N E's will lower their prices.
They should.
And they said they're lowering their prices, the gas has went down.
Sure.
Right? Hey, you're fair game if you're in this room, every one of you guys out there. You, Marcus.
About time we protest, O G N E is what it's about.
That's personal.
Okay, next one's O sixteen, reimbursed project. So what this is, is basically, this is where rents, grants, grants, hospital authority grants, cell phone power, rental income comes into, and so we have a list of um all these grants and, and expenses. So you can see primarily, we spend this money on, on fourteen, ten, general government, that's the cell tower rental, and we have to keep that thing, and it's expensive. And I'm talking about the clock tower. Right?
Mm-hmm.
The big clock tower. And it needs painted, by the way, sometime soon, but that's.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
For the Adkinson clock tower?
Yeah.
Yep, just to paint it, not to.
It's looking pretty bad.
Just trying to get the Boy Scouts involved where they uh.
Yeah, you're gonna put, you're gonna mark it up on the clock.
Paint that, we'll provide ropes and harnesses. Haven't had anybody do that, maybe we could put, I don't know, horse string, I guess I could do that.
So I, reimbursed.
My ideas are all that.
So the reimbursed projects, that's not a revenue stream, we don't get rental from these things or.
That, that, this revenue.
It's kind of a strange account, so, so this one has a lot of the hospital authority grants that are, that go out to the different departments of the city. So those are tracked in here as well, so hence the, the reimbursed projects of where, you know, the city paid for X project, where the hospital authority grant paid for it. Um what makes it a little bit of a complicated account is the revenue stream, like what Tim is talking about, with, with the cell phone towers that are on the clock tower. So those, those are one things where revenues are coming in, and we usually are wind up spending those revenues on the clock tower to maintain it. So it's, that's why it's, it's sort of basically reimbursing itself. But the majorities are, is where we track the hospital authority grants, where the cities are executing those projects from the hospital authority grants.
But with a total revenue stream of roughly a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, this seems like the wrong fund to try to paint something that costs four hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, we won't be able to, we'll have to figure that out, one of the capital accounts, at some point, probably one fifty-seven or something like that, or the hospital authority maybe. Did not, who owns that park?
And Mark, it is unfortunate, we only have two cell providers on the clock tower. Looking at a, and I did a market analysis back in my Oklahoma City days. We're gonna be lucky if we can draw about seventy, seventy-five thousand out of those two antennas that are on the tower. So the antennas, eh, per year, um so the antennas are not gonna pay for uh this kind of work, we're gonna have to subsidize it somewhere.
Yeah, we'll, we'll deliver it, it's here, I, I, it's probably something next year we need to definitely look at. Which is why, except Ryan, bring, bring in.
Maybe we shut out the, the clock.
I got a paintbrush, if you get a paintbrush, we can do, we'll take the east side, somebody else.
I'm down. I'm down.
On the police, pitch thirty-eight.
I was thinking if we get a clock tower sponsor.
There you go. That's a good idea.
You can pay him to be the sponsor of the clock tower.
You mean sell the naming rights to the clock tower?
O G and E.
O G and E. We can get credit on our streetlight. We can give us a credit on the streetlight.
I was thinking out of the box.
Yeah. Good idea. Good idea, Chris.
He's going to get fired tomorrow.
Okay. Police Department. Obviously very large budget, so in here.
I'm sorry, Tim, before you go on, on page thirty-seven, various. Uh, I noticed, and this goes back to a conversation we just had, yeah, very briefly. I noticed that the tree board is getting four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, am I right? Page thirty-seven.
That's its fund balance, sorry. So for, that's its carrying forward fund balance.
Tree board would be, that's the rest.
That's a hospital.
Yeah, that's, they're not giving.
So they're getting the money from the hospital authority on an annual basis though, right?
No, they're not giving them money on an annual basis. That is the great money they've used by trees, trees, they're going to use. I don't see them spending any money next year.
Okay, we'll talk about that later. Thank you.
Item forty-eight on that same list, it says credit union. Does the city have a credit union?
We do have a credit union.
It's over by the Hidden Creek Golf Course.
So it used to be a twenty-eight, twenty-eight, the building that just went down.
Okay.
Across the street from the hospital. But they also were renting next to the Nine Hole Golf Course.
I did not, I did not know that.
Yeah.
And they pass, and that's what you're seeing here, that's the one.
And it's a credit union. In fact, I have a flyer I can give you. If you form a credit union, I get fifty dollars. They said it happened to Texas today.
I was planning on giving you my people.
Yeah, it's, it's a, called Oklahoma Federal Credit Union. We believe the name of it. We used to have our own credit union and then they merged into this, something that could, it's a lot bigger, bigger multiple ranches.
Also for the hospital employees.
So they operate independently? They just rent the building from us?
Yeah, they operate independently, but they're joined with the hospital as well. And they're, that's a temporary location. That is really more of a storage area, maybe a little bit of workspace for them. But when we took twenty-eight, twenty-eight down, they, they need to find another location and they're looking.
We, we use that money for emergency repair. Last year we used it to replace an H P A C unit. We just let it stored up until something big goes wrong with the building.
Roots, painting, you name it. We just put it in there and then we have money to go to make repairs. Okay, police department. So the police department is, you can see a revenue of nineteen million worth versus an expenditure of twenty million two. Some inclusions in that budget are we added a radio tech at their request. We split that sixty, forty with police and fire. That would give us two radio techs. So we always have coverage. We have a radio tech that had a health issue and it was no good because we have to back them up with other I T people. But we, but, but they want additional radio tech. They live in that world. And so we did that at their request. We added a, another S R O. Remember mid-year, we added an S R O over at Memphis City High School. So there's two over there with the request of Dr. Todd and the board. And then this year we added additional S R O to, to Carl Albert. And it floats back and forth with the middle school or the junior high, whatever they call it these days, and in the high school at their request. And then over at the junior high, there is a, a fake head director, one of our retired police officers over there has an S R O.
Any other funds that are earmarked, like if the police department issued a million dollars worth of speeding tickets, they don't keep that million dollars, it all goes into the general fund.
Yeah, it goes in, but the police department gets sixty-two percent of that, so it's thirty-seven, twenty-five split, they get thirty-seven percent.
So it's semi earmarked.
Semi earmarked. It is earmarked, I mean, that, that, that has been voted on by the people in various ballots. So that's, you know, these funds, they, they can't go, police can't go to, to fire and take their money, fire can't come and get their money, general fund can't go get police money, of course, they all have to live in these, these financial silos, so to speak. And a lot of money in the city is used, as I go through this and tell you where the revenue sources, all those are dedicated funds for purpose, for those purposes, these funds, that's how we account.
Is it factually correct that because of the sales tax that was approved, where they get that large portion of the sales tax, that the fire and the police department in this city are probably the most adequately funded departments, where they have more in reserves than the rest of the departments?
That would be probably hackable. It's not a bad, they, they've never had these fund balances, look at police and fire, especially police, and the way they've split these sales taxes over time, it used to be fire had more money than police in fund balance, and then so they corrected, and they overcorrected, and now police has a better fund balance than, than police does. But, uh, yeah, these fund balances, when you're looking at police at a, what is it, fifteen million dollar fund balance? Yeah, no, we've never seen these kind of numbers, and this all happened during the COVID time because we're not going downtown, we're living here.
So pretty soon we're gonna have to go to them and get a loan.
Let them paint the tower.
The C A O's gonna paint the tower.
They used to borrow money from sanitation to buy police cars. Not that long ago, they had to borrow money from sanitation.
We just try to make sure everybody remembers that. I used to, don't forget, well, you know, good times are easy.
Yeah.
But bad times are really bad.
And that's what we talked earlier about keeping those fund balances, that's why it's so difficult, but, you know, hold on, say this about everybody, because they're expecting submissions. You know, that's, you know, it's important to keep those numbers, it's a sacred account.
It is a sacred account. For rainy day funds.
Right, and sometimes people don't understand that, if our county can't give us more money, we need to work, well, that's not us.
Are we still, are we still moving toward getting those fund balances to ten percent and then the general fund to twenty?
It's a matter of putting the ordinance on the, on the agenda and you guys approving it. Because you want to become a little, protect these funds even more.
Fifty-five percent down to the ten.
We talked, we talked about that before, the bigger ones who got it, or the ones that developed that.
Right, type it up.
But we, we should have at least a ten percent. Some cities have twenty percent in their general fund.
And that's actually suggested, it's put, stopped by on the financial responsibility side of it, so we're moving, we're moving toward that, I'm glad.
Why don't you make a note that in the next two months we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, next is twenty-five, which is juvenile, juveniles paid for by tickets to the juveniles, written by police officers. It is a part-time juvenile officer, and then the municipal prosecutor, a little piece of her comes out of here. It's just pretty much a break even, which is common.
You are hiring a part-time juvenile officer, so if you get somebody?
We are.
We don't get that fixed, if we're not chasing the law, we're not trying to.
Chasing.
Pretty strange, because somebody from the building that got arrested was a juvenile.
Mister City Manager, in this area, um, I'd really like to see, and, and I had a brief meeting with Chief Whitley in regards to a family who had some crisis issues, and, um, I became further aware that we don't have any local juvenile programs that are aimed at intervention. So oftentimes when our kids get in trouble, they go to court, they pay the fine and fee, and they move along. I don't know if there's a way to get some federal grant funding, or maybe to pull some nonprofit organizations together, whether it's mentorship programs, or something that is really driven by the police department and the court, where we're, we're doing more than just pay your fee, and hopefully that is enough intervention, but rather redirection.
We do, we do services program too.
For the juveniles, we do, okay.
Yeah, and that's what the juvenile program does, is instead of them going in and just paying the fines and fees, they work with them, they put them on probation, and they go through rehabilitation type services to try to get them back on the right track, to try to prevent that recidivism.
So I'll have to connect with you just to learn more about that and distinguish.
Yep.
Yeah, and then on this one, I know, in a year ago, I had some really constructive conversations with, uh, former Councilman Rick Rice, who said he, when he was, I guess, in office, I think he possibly passed an ordinance where if a juvenile was to get in trouble, there was some family mediation counseling that would be required as a probation agreement. And I don't know if that's being implemented anymore.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up with the ordinance and see, it, it really, from what he expressed, was a very constructive program that would require parents to get involved within the mental health system, if mental health is an issue that is causing.
Now, when juveniles receive citations, there is a meeting scheduled with the juvenile and their guardians to sit down and talk about the program and go through it, and maybe that's what he was referring to.
Okay. I'll find out and get back with you on that.
It, it's optional, they can go, they can go pay their fines, they can, they can pay it and walk away, or we try to channel them into this program to help them.
And unfortunately, I mean, we've seen those numbers go down because it's just, we're in a difficult world with juveniles, and it's because many grandparents raise these kids, and it's really difficult for the police officers to write a grandparent a ticket, and they will shake your right hand and ticket. The only way we can get them in our system is for tickets to be written, and then they give it to the officer, and we deal with it. But if you don't write a ticket, they just.
I'm not opposed to the citation, I think we need to go a step further in, in order to intervene, you know, because, and, and honestly, I used to be a pro leniency on a lot of children, because I don't like the criminalization of children, but I've also had so many parents who've now become victims of preventable crises, and had there been adequate intervention in a timely manner, we could have avoided the escalation of certain things. And, and I don't mean that as a crime and punishment piece, but as a redirection piece.
We probably integrate that program with S R Os too.
Yeah.
Teaching in schools.
Yeah.
We don't just say that S R Os aren't just security guards, there's more.
And, and Miss Maxwell could lead this cause.
You know, I am interested in, in what we are doing on juveniles, and I know that you have the juvenile judge, and I think that's a place where we could start to figure out.
What he suggests.
Because there's some things that can be done that it doesn't cost. And, and I was pleased to hear that you use a tail star, you use the boys and girls club. So I know about budgets, I'm really, I really think I have the budgets down, but the extra information I'm learning is just, it really is. And, and I would like to give a few of some of that.
The general order, juvenile judge handles juveniles exclusively in these.
Really, that's where it's focused, is that.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good starting place for us.
Just to see what he recommends that we could.
See, I didn't know about the boys and girls club, I didn't know about what you were going to tell us on, so all of that is great information. So that's a story, because I was sort of about my juveniles too.
Yeah. Our, our children technically, absolutely, our collective children.
Where is that now, is it country states or?
Country states.
Thank you.
These are gonna be using to maximize these are, these are, the next few are the police department, their little account that got set up years ago, and some of them have purposes, and some of them don't, and some of them go away over time. But let's just run through these police state seizures, really rare to, to get in seizure money anymore. Uh, we, partly going to be running out of this program. We'll put some travel on schools, some uniformed gear, small tools, equipment, wherever you spend a lot of this, but, but it is about seventy-three thousand, a hundred thousand dollars over there. You never know when we're gonna get it, we could get in thirty-one's, the next one, that's police special projects, that's where your donations go. We're shocked with the cop, and those sort of programs that the department does, it's absolutely excellent programs, but they are accounted for and run through a revenue account expense, just like the other ones. Next one is police lab fees, and those if you don't have any longer, so there's four hundred dollars revenue, there's fifteen hundred expenses, we'll probably possible move this to the different fund, to provide a, to, 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 just not much. One time, it's a lot of, marijuana laws and change. Employee activity fund, thirty-five, and replacements, that, that, it's, this is the fund that, that is the employees' activities, so swim party, Christmas party, chili luncheons, uh, employee picnics, those are the, that's where this money comes from. A lot of it came from donations over the years, we tend to, I, I don't know, I, I'm a little, I don't mind seeking donations, but I don't want to be out, we're supposed to be too much on the donation side. Christmas party, a lot of, a lot of donations going in, but just, I don't know, I think we can, we go, we go to various funds in the city and produce fifteen thousand revenue we can get into. And the employees have a committee, they plan to organize these parties, and you guys will be invited to a lot of them. Christmas party is a really good time. Okay, next one is jail, these are from the jail fees, the incarceration fees, that believe it or not, it's kind of interesting over time, you know, as you've approached, you've approached, uh, the concept of the Denver prison, for, you know, you don't have, you know, so many people in, and custody status, just the, the nature of, what's, what's the word, Sarah?
I don't know what you're trying to say. The nature of what, crime and punishment, or?
The nature of crime and punishment has really changed, and the, the money that's really kind of coming in here, there, there's money that comes through the jail for incarceration fees, but, but we are making like between five and eight thousand dollars a month for the walk-through warrant services.
Yeah.
So what that means is instead of going down to the county jail, you have a warrant, paying the warranty, and, and being bonded out, you can come here, to our jail, where you don't have to go to the county jail, that's where I got the, that's where we get a nice service, we provide the assistance, and then provide some money for the warrant, so we use it for, for various maintenance and supplies to operate our jail.
Honestly, like looking at that budget, um, it's, like you said, the revenue is so small, and it really, the, the number of people being foot trafficked through, through the jail is so small, I just don't even know if we need a jail anymore. Hey, that's me being progressive here, but there's something to think about if we do build a new city hall, because most individuals that end up in our jail are municipal offenders.
They're all, they're all mislabeled.
Yeah. Yeah, but those guys are transported pretty fast. But, I mean, I wouldn't suggest it at this point, because the Oklahoma County Jail is a deadly place, and we don't want to put our residents at risk in that facility, but in, in the hopes in the next ten years, I don't know.
Four thousand dollars, or, what, forty-two million dollars?
Nearly four hundred million, I want to say, yeah. They're building a treehouse, as Commissioner Mon says.
So the next one, police impound fees, thirty-seven, you can pound cars, and pay a fee to announce, assist for some travel, school, maintenance equipment, crimes, other people, their property, pretty small thing. Okay, that's all police, fire just has two funds, the fire has O four O, O four O is their operating account, it is expenditures of fifteen million, two oh nine, revenues of fifteen million, three thirty-three, so they're setting up a fund balance of nine point four million dollars, which is most considerable. Right now, this doesn't have any revenue for the police fire training facility, we're still working to do that, working with him on, on full fire cap and training position, in the budget, fit in the budget, we're working through, and, and operations plan, if it's a call of business plan, that would be too strong.
Way to re-cover, re-cover some of the expenses.
Yeah, we, and both these things have an average for the police fire facility, that's a, you know, I, I think of, no, it's, it's real.
Tim, on page fifty, would you be able to explain what the investment interest is? And kind of the difference in the numbers, like investment interest in actual twenty twenty-three was one sixty, five six three, um, fifty?
Okay, all right, go ahead, sir.
So just a breakdown of what that investment interest actually means in reality, and then there seems to be like, I guess, a disparity or a, a huge difference in the numbers throughout the years there, and if you could maybe explain or give a breakdown of that.
So, go ahead, so the biggest disparity is that, when, so when all of, all of the funds money that's sitting in the bank account, if they're part of fund balances, or whatever the interest on how much money is, is there still in the bank account, that's exactly what I'm hearing. So the biggest disparity is really what happened with interest rates over the past few years. So then you see, you see investment interest of one sixty, and now it's dropped to all the way to three hundred eighty-two this year, last year the interest rate was, was a market crazy. So now, you see it drop to three hundred for this next year, I'm a backer, that's just based upon, okay, maybe the best way to pull back. And we saw what the, what we say, it didn't pull back, and kept it the same, I have a good thought somewhere, so. And you have done a good job.
Thank you.
Did we ever complete the gymnastics of us charging these marijuana shops for the extra inspections that we have to do?
I, I, uh, no, no, we'd have to ask on that question now. Okay.
I got it. What was the exact question again, Mary?
Well, at one time, we had talked about, because of the increased inspections that these marijuana shops require, that we were going to charge for them, uh, when we went out and had to do the inspections, and I never heard any more about it. And also, did we complete the, or did the fire department complete the, uh, job description for the training captain?
Yeah, well, I've interviewed it, it's, it's.
I will find out.
They did have, I talked about the radio tax, fire gets forty percent of that radio tax, so, they also got software maintenance, forty-one thousand, and, um, they got the same, uh, there is no cost of living in this budget for anyone other than the non-union personnel, which is a record, you get the discussion. Next is capitalization, so very similar to police, where they get a, a little bit of tax money, and, uh, the interest, but, and then they get a transfer in, so out of their operating partners, for their seven hundred and sixty, two thousand dollars of revenue, they got ninety-seven thousand of expenses, this is their, we had, and this budget, what their request was, you can see under capital, I lay five-year apparatus for capitalization, two hundred thousand dollars, I think that happened, that's what I can calculate, I'll check it to you, and it looks like their fund balance is about two point seven million, really, and this shows because that money is reserved, like it's been appropriated, it's a show, fund balance, because it's been reserved.
And that was zero, not wrong.
It was zero, that's a good point, it was zero, and something that's. They worked together, and they created the spreadsheet, the recapitalization of the fund trust, and they have even capitalized each year, we have that out for like fifteen years, that's how long it takes to, to operate our apparatus. Good stuff, the good thing is it lasts a long time, happening is really expensive to get.
Is there, uh, any movement to remember the need to on station one?
We've made that request, sir. I don't think it's coming, it's, it's.
Well, a good windstorm is gonna take it somewhere, it's.
You hit a, you hit a source, you hit a source.
You and I, we had lunch over there one day.
Dangerously close, you entered the old test, and you're. And you can see the capital, it's, it's upkeep of their property. Next is the welcome center, welcome center's kind of interesting, I find it interesting, because we don't operate the welcome center anymore, they decided they were gonna operate it, which is fine, other than.
COVID, thanks to COVID.
We, we own the land, was the building actually owned by them?
Yes.
Their, their building in our land, it's not a good marriage when that happens, or it's not getting divorced in this case. So we are responsible with the parking lot, park, they got that building, I can think of a really good use for that building, a really good use, we really, I promise you, but we don't have. Not you too, it's a good, good job.
What?
It just, anyway, go ahead.
No, Susan had a question first, go ahead.
Um, I'm curious why those part of the welcome center budget, I don't see anything in regards to fishing, that's where, uh, the board. Nothing?
We have pressure, that's. Uh, I mean, there's not really supposed to be any fishing, there are ponds in there, it costs a lot of money to mess up water, a little bit on the steps, and. The people that put fish in there, donated lots of fish in there.
I'm just, I mean, five dollars a pop, like, for that kind of thing, nothing?
Never had an official name?
I think I asked this last year or two, I don't, is there a way where we can get some financial assistance from the state, since basically they've occupied our land, or using that property for their, I mean, well, there's to pay for the flyers, I mean, the state tourism, I mean, are they interested in supporting this effort out here, or they just put up a building and expect us to maintain it?
They're operating it, they're maintaining the building, we have to maintain the park and the parking lot.
Yeah, but I noticed like we're paying for, I don't know, some flyers and booklets and.
Remember, this, the welcome center.
Folder displays.
So, okay, let's, let's go through that, that's over in the C B B. But this money that comes in here is from the hotel motel tax, and it's distributed, they get thirty percent of this to support the welcome center, but it can be used for parks, and that's primarily what's over there, is park, so we're maintaining that park out of this. And I actually allowed them, and we've talked about it, Susan's brought this up multiple times over the years, let's contract some of this stuff out, you know, and, and see what kind of jobs we have out of the contractor, instead of having to hire full-time employees for many things, that can find things to do throughout the whole year, tweaking this part of stuff, you know?
Yeah.
So we are gonna try, we've added ten thousand dollars to, um, for contracts to maintain the welcome center park, and I think that covers Charles Johnson too, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna give it a shot, Susan, to see how it works, if everybody's unhappy, and Mr. Brown, we'll prove it back out.
Well, that was actually one of the questions I had, I was, I asked, and I'm gonna ask to see how outside as well.
Yeah, we'll see.
We'll keep you posted.
Okay, let's go to the next, it is the C B B, what you were talking about, um, Sarah, is, so this is where fifty-six percent of the hotel motel tax goes, so we're up to eighty-six percent.
What is the hotel motel tax?
It is five percent, and we voted it five percent in nineteen ninety-seven, so we are twenty-seven years since we've had any increase in the hotel motel tax.
So should we raise that?
I don't know.
You said nineteen what?
Nineteen ninety-seven, it's my understanding is.
And it's five percent of what?
Five percent of every hotel that's been in the city, so if you have a hotel, there's a five percent hotel motel tax.
Is there a way to?
Program? Program?
That money we raised, if you go to.
We'll get it, well, right now, it would go, it would be split between the C B B, the welcome center, and, um, developer, economic, yeah, economic, uh, issues in here, that's the three places it goes. Yeah, you can dedicate it to ordinance, and both the people you can dedicate it, rank out, vote on by people to go to the C B B.
What was your thought, welcome center?
Welcome center, C B B.
I like the mayor's suggestion of possibly looking to increase it, it's pretty low for where we are with other taxes.
Not much.
I think for about one, one half.
Because of Oklahoma City, that, you know, what are you paying to a major city? Nashville's twelve percent, fourteen percent, Hawaii is really high.
Oh, God, yeah.
It's really a low number, it's a, you know, it, it's a decision, it's a discussion we need to have, probably a strategic plan this year, we'll do strategic planning.
Go ahead, the player for the, what's, all, you know, all the cities.
First, I've already, I've already given that over, and we're, uh.
Susan's working on it.
What, what is our tax right now? Oklahoma City is five and one half, I've just looked it up right here, so Oklahoma City is only a half percent higher than we are.
But remember, this is money that's governed for people that aren't from Oklahoma City, we're not taxing our people.
And, and the thing is, I don't think most people who are traveling through are gonna sit there and evaluate who's paying a higher tax rate, they're, they're lucky to get a room, and, and our rooms are probably a lot less expensive than what OKC hotels are, so we could probably.
This is last week in front of us, and our professional pool, because of the tournaments we had on Mac and Rain.
I can tell you that I agree to be funded, petition the MAC.
You can take that addition and, and run a resource that, we can get this MAC down.
There you go.
We have green builds, and, I'm just writing that down diligently, I'm probably.
I am, I probably never would.
We are city, it is prospering from the MAC and from the reface. It is amazing, it is amazing, we have some software, we've been testing it, it tells us what, what those people are from, and their license plates. I think it's.
No, cellphone, cellphone data, it's cellphone data.
I have a friend of mine that, actually, since one of the hires.
Edmund Suck.
Has come out here, and he's been out here several times, there's some software, and they play some over there, they play some here on the field, and then play some over at the MAC, and he, he's called me twice in the last six weeks, if you guys are looking, I have to, he's head man. So for them to come and head man and say, we're going to buy that job, it says a lot, because.
You know, the great thing is that these people are kind of not, head man, drive back four, they might be here, but we're getting, we're getting, we're on stage.
Their tax is around us.
Yeah.
So we'll start looking at this, instead of way of, we can do this, and we can.
It'll be good for us.
I'll just tease you.
Okay, so currently, C B B is looking at this, we added on the C B. Okay, so currently, CBB, just looking at this, we added on the CBB side, we added two things. I want you to know about one, is we added some wages in here for, and we have three seventy-eight revenue, three sixteen expenditure, expenditure, Mr. Thompson.
Forty-six.
Fifty-six of the doctor.
Okay.
Sixty-two.
Okay.
And so we've added some wages because we have an Austin Parks Director who happens to also be the Communications Director. And he throws his mail on the transportation side. He's so good.
So I'm gonna speak on it too, because, because the mayor, Susan was around, Melissa's going on too. The, our Communications Director, he used to come to council, take pictures of the phone. And the information that's getting out now is, 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 like yours has, so he's... What we need to do, we stolen, we need to keep it.
We stolen from Oklahoma City. And he wants to do this parking wreck because he loves it. And I need to give him some help because he's really difficult to... So we added, I added twenty-five thousand in there for some wages so he can get some, a digital media coordinator. And then I also added, um, ten thousand dollars where it says Conference and City Funds, thirty thousand, thirty-four-six. And that's under CBB seven and seven-ten. So we've always given Susan McCory, and she used to run the CBB, and it, and she's running it out of Josh's department still. But she's also doing events, and she's really good at both. But these Conference and City Funds have been used, it's been about twenty thousand. We've had them there for a while. And she's really diligent about picking who she gives that money to. I mean, she'll provide transportation buses. And she might, she might, um, sponsor a, a break in conference, but they gotta be at the Reed Center spending a bunch of money. Or she didn't give me any, okay? I mean, it's one of the, she's good at what she does, and she can back it in what flows and what numbers and what conference is spending. And she's just really good at it. And things have gotten so expensive that we added another ten thousand to give her a little bit more room to try to keep attracting people to our city. And it's very worthwhile. Do that in there. And, um, the visitor's guide is, Sarah pointed out, so she does that as well. That visitor's guide goes all over the state of Oklahoma, goes all over the country. It's around the Oklahoma Tourism Department, but you make a, you can call them, or you can go online, wherever you're at when you come to Oklahoma. Boom, there's Midwest City, you can check that, and they get it sent to you. It's a, it's a good investment.
Also, firstly, the CBB, um, what's mine, also, that is, we made a proposal, we're going to add that on this, uh, uh, in this spot, month, we did, we're cutting it for the second, so, um, um, we did leave, uh, the, the, um, um, this related work to drive us, some of the, it's, uh, a topic.
Okay.
Um, and so I think it, it starts from one hand to time, but I also just feel like, yeah, we have a great gym in our backyard in Rose City. Um, and, uh, I, nobody that, uh, even who was in high school either, Tom, that was safe this year. Which I was very proud of. Again, I always started from here from the university. You all have your own significant responsibility, so you know, there's a drive that runs up line, basically, to go to downtown. So, um, I was really excited about that. So between, um, all of those, I think, just we need to make sure we're actively covering ourselves for visitors and so forth, is all that matters. You know, as well as we are focusing on the MAC and, um, all the, all areas of the, divisions and, um, so. Just, I just, so, so.
Thank you.
When, when visitors come to town, you know, the worst thing that can happen PR-wise is that they, uh, have a crime committed to them. Uh, it makes bad press.
Yeah.
And do we incorporate security for visitors into this budget? Or is it, is it anywhere? Is it, do we control parking lots of the hotels and have guards at the ballgames and things like that? Is that paid for out of this budget?
So ballfields around Oklahoma City and the Reed side, I mean, we, we know within the big events, there's communications between Josh and the Police Department, and they're gonna, they're going to, um, do patrols for the parking lots at the hotels. And what happens, these, these theft rings move all over. Not just in Oklahoma, they move place to place. And they'll never stay in one place because they don't want to get caught. So they'll hit you, and then a month later, you get hit again. And, but we, we routinely, uh, patrol those lots. And when we know there's events, and that's one of Susan's jobs, is to make sure that Whitley, his people, know that there's a big event in town, that there's going to be extra security. But as far as that, the, the, if that hotel wants security, they can get security, but they're gonna have to pay for it. And they can get police security, but they gotta walk through the officers and pay them on the side to do that.
Ezra, I was just wondering if...
Yeah, that's how it works.
So the Police Department basically eats it unless some third party agrees to pay for their services.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Now, Councilman Thompson, statistically, I want to acknowledge and recognize, comparable to other municipalities, Midwest City has some of the lowest crime rates, particularly violent crime rates. So we are more likely to become victims of crimes by outsiders than, than the other way around.
Oh, that's good.
No, it is good. It's a beautiful thing to have as a resident.
You're hungry, there's food.
All right, I got rest of the night.
Sorry, I couldn't... Yeah, you're right, Sarah. I mean, we, we get this stigma sometimes. It's really frustrating. Offline, we talk about, I think, some of the reasons you've gotten that stigma, but the law's trying, it's really well there.
But time has got to come, I would like to know.
Yeah, serious crime.
Serious.
But...
Part one, part one.
I want to speak to the Police Department because I know just the work that they've been all of them. They want their city to be safer, I mean, so, uh, just to know that some activities go on, that's broad and proud. It's just gonna be able to control it, um, really, and, and, uh, it'll take care of all of that in overtime, so.
Yeah, it does. And the saturation that we do, um, the events, you know, we have some events we help people out with. And, you know, it's, it's coming out of their budget to do that. I think that's part of being in this community and supporting our community. I'm looking over the top of your head. Okay, oh, six oh, we're getting dangerously close to a break, y'all. Uh, oh, six oh, capital drainage. Now, we're gonna start into the fund stuff. So, okay.
Fifty-eight, page fifty-eight of the, fifty-eight of the paper, sixty-four PDF.
All right. So capital drainage, we have, um, we have a drainage improvements come in through here. It is a number that, that is, is small in nature. You can see we have very little fund balance. We've done one major project out of this account. So the drainage, the drainage, this fund. So when we did the stormwater fee, we did not increase this drainage fee. We probably should have, but we didn't. And so it's really this, all it can afford is what you see. I mean, there's not any, it's just labor for these capital, dr- or they're not called capital, they're drainage. This drainage through that's in here that is very talented. Like, probably falling because he wants to make them do street department work all the time.
No, that's not true.
Is that true, Paul?
That is not true. They are very, they are very good. They're very good employees.
So, anyway, really, we can, we can pay these guys out here, but we really can't do any project work out here. They had, my gosh, they had asked for some partial funding on a backhoe, a new pickup. We just had to, we moved that to another fund because there just wasn't even money for that. So we are, I don't know, we're gonna have to decide what we want to do with this fund. I mean, it, it is... When you have a water increase, you have a stormwater increase, you know, you gotta, you gotta layer these in. I mean, you know how, that's just, you don't want to hit the citizens all at once with a bunch of increases. And so, anyway...
What, what does drainage do?
Drainage is for improving for all the drainage infrastructure, that's all, public drainage infrastructure, for them to maintain it. Keep the trees out, keep it cleaned out, cave-ins, fix them. I mean, areas of the city that should, should have had drainage improvements that didn't, when they got built. I can bet, keep going.
So that's a lot of money if we wanted to bring our drainage systems up to, you know, standards. It's a lot more than a budget like this could...
Yeah. Well, but, but I kind, here's how I kind of looked at this, Mark, is that we did that point four oh one five extension. We're getting roughly four, four and a half million dollars in there. And some of that can be drainage projects, staffing. Remember, we talked, and I, I know in all my presentations, I think Matt did the same thing, Pat, that we may have to take some personnel costs. We may have to eat some personnel costs out of that four or five million dollars over time. But right now, this is where they are, they probably need two or three more people. So I think for now, we're okay. Well, I mean, we only have so many projects we can do all at once for Mr. Bundy. Because a lot of this stuff's gotta be engineered.
Yeah.
So we're, we're okay now, but over time, we probably need to bolster this up.
We just, I can't find, we've got email work, it's yesterday, it's today, maybe, on the stormwater, master stormwater. It's going off the bay. In fact, it's on the streets now.
And that's in the next budget, so you run these together. They're next to each other for a reason, oh, sixty-one. And that's stormwater, and that's where we did this impervious soil calculation, right, where, for commercial only. And you can see the stormwater is now about one point, one and four in, uh, revenue with expenditures of one and five. But inside of that is where we put this, the drainage master plan. So of that, it's a pretty big chunk of money, which is the, where is it? Can I ask a question? As important as this is, why is there a three hundred thousand dollar reduction in this year?
We had a transfer in of three hundred and twenty-five this year.
I'm sorry?
There, so we transferred in three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this, this year right now. So that, that's part of, of like, why at least there's a revenue reduction. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to dig back to him like, okay, why did we transfer in three hundred and twenty-five? So I, I need to figure out that answer, but that, that's the big portion of it.
Well, this is where we're paying for the...
Oh, it's a grant, that's what it was.
Three hundred and twenty-five is like, we've got some public number we're using for the stormwater master plan. So that kind of distribution of the deposit, where they're gonna have to, supplement the projects, and you actually make order for them.
Yeah, so it inflated your expenditures. If you go back to twenty-two, twenty-three, we only spent six hundred thousand. You go all the way to far left side. So we're not sort of planning the budget in lieu of the department money? No.
Remember, this fund is a federal mandate. Paul can, if you want to get down in the weeds and learn all the technical side of this sometime, Paul can walk you through all the detail. It's sixty-one.
Which is measuring the stormwater in the drainage basis.
We were on, we were on drainage, now we've moved to stormwater?
Yeah.
But the stormwater flows into the drainage dishes.
Correct, correct.
So, and, and they're, they're one system.
It's easily about this quality of, drainage is to, is this quality, and then it's going to carry this volume of stormwater out, it's a, so, so, well, it's actually, it's quality of discharge, it's a, so. So it's, they are tied together, they're, they're at it, which is something that we'll eventually talk through. Because, uh, to address this in the future, but right now, that's the way it's set up. Because that's the way they would build, it's a two different divisions, something differently, and obviously now it's all going to be a...
In most cities, they're, they're in the same fund, by honestly.
Yeah.
And you see it merge together. And we've talked about merging this together. And this doesn't, the revenue doesn't have, um, a full year in it because it's going to take six months to build that system into our, our, um, Central Square billing cycle department and setting those all up. It's not, it's not like they have that in there, and you just write in the numbers and click, and then you turn it over to the cycles of billing. It doesn't work that way. It doesn't exist. We're about to build it from scratch.
And in fact, we just, uh, last week, Tim just signed the contract to have Central Square build that for us.
Send that folder.
Yeah, it's, and so that contract's in the fold. Because there, there is, there's going to be about an eleven thousand dollar cost for Central Square, if I remember that my number's right. About eleven thousand dollar cost for Central Square to build that program for us.
Okay, so that's, so it's a work in progress with drainage. Probably need to merge these together at some point. And then we may still need to add a little bit, a little bit of money to drainage. It's built into the, into the utility bill. Let's give it a little time.
We'll take credit, we'll credit it too. Only in a few years, it's been taken off us, the drainage issues are becoming proactive.
Yeah, we're trying.
They all used to be reacting. So here again, it's, um, it's needing your staff, it's needing...
Well, it's, it's a joy. It's, council's gotten a lot of complaints over the years, so it's, uh... You took on as the chairman of that.
But it's your staff that's, if you're losing, it's now becoming proactive.
I appreciate that. Okay, oh, sixty-five, then we'll take a break.
Just one second, I'm just starting the whole league sixty-one, quick question. Sixty-one, about sixty-one. The sustainable landscaping pilot, what the heck is that?
Mr. Streets, I'm glad you're here.
So one of the things we're trying to urge people to do is to put in sustainable landscaping as opposed to, uh, grass or, or... Uh, there's a couple of programs in state where we encourage it, to put in sustainable landscaping, which means they don't have to water it, they don't have to water it, and you don't have to, well, we got placed in front of, no, Well, we've got a place in front of, no, it's not like the mayor, it's not an example, or sure, in, uh, a different, uh, in a different location. This is some, there are examples in the city. We're gonna try to put this in front of Charles Johnson Building, so that the neighbors association is gonna see what this looks like and how can we maintain it. We also have some challenges with drainage in that, so...
So, if I'm not mistaken, you called, what you're calling me is you're gonna tear out grass that currently is in front of Charles Johnson, and as we pick up landscaping. Okay.
And we're excited and very generous, so...
Okay, why would we do that though? I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm lost now. He took me down off a, a level. Why would we not just find a location that is about to be built and do it later?
We have to have a lot of city projects, or city buildings around town. And we want a place that can be used for education purposes, and we need to make a better decision than, uh, how we put it. So, we also have a landscape check. We've built, well, six trees that we're trying to plant in that location, because unfortunately, this is one of those problems that should have reduced the maintenance that currently lies on the shoulders of our street and facilities folks. And this will not happen in any case, in the same standard, same level. So, this should, should improve it, and that workload, and at the same time, be useful for education purposes.
Okay, we're stuck with that. Don't we have some areas that are under construction, like, aren't we still putting in trail sections, Mr. Bundy?
Probably the trails that are accessible in the same, the same way that this building is accessible. I would love to go to places...
Let's talk about all of them.
I would say, I'd love to, you know, just admit there are a couple of places.
Last time you took them to tour, it didn't go well.
Well, it did, we got a wonderful, we got a wonderful face, we went to that description, we were just like...
Yeah, but then how are you gonna do with getting the, uh, O-G-N-E to...
Back to O-G-N-E again.
Mike Chris on the tour.
Right, exactly.
Oh, does that include all that or...
Yes.
And everything you do in that sustainable, it'll be to our code, right?
Yeah.
So, it'll be a good example of what you can do.
Dangerous, it was. Okay. Street tax, and I wish to start with the next one, honestly, with the next book, but I'm gonna bring Brandon. Brandon's here for a reason. I'm gonna hand out a hundred and ninety capital improvement projects to you all tonight, if you can see. You see, that's the question. So, we're gonna talk about that, but this is kinda where it all starts. This is oh sixty-five street tax, and this is dedicated sales tax. And it's dedicated, even though it says street tax, it's a bad name. It is for streets, parks, trails, sidewalks, and public transportation. Okay? You can see it all in that right column. Trails, sidewalks, parks, and how it is all divided. And that money on the next page is, you look down at six thirty twenty-five, and it shows the revenue, it's split, how the revenue is split, and the actual expenses that we budgeted for this year. And then you go back to the front page, and you can see that trails and sidewalks, the trail lighting that we took from the store, from the streetlight fee, really couldn't afford it, is now over here for street, for trail lighting, because it's trail, that's where that lighting comes from, so it goes to O-G-N-E. Parks, the pool liner, there's a hundred and twenty thousand left pool liner that we continue to add to out of parks. And in streets, this is the mid-state traffic control devices that we took, once again, out of the streetlight fee. And that software evaluation that we took out of oh nine oh, do you remember that? That Brandon asked for to help them manage, statistically manage evaluating our streets. That's where that's at, so it's out of this fund, two hundred and ten thousand. And in public transportation, this is, this is staying up with the bus stops, and it's also getting to pay our good friends from Embark, a significant amount of money.
So, we pay Embark six hundred and twenty-nine thousand?
No, I think it's, um, what's, Embark is a hundred and fifty, and then, um, in oh nine, how much did we give in oh nine? I think it was roughly half in each one, wasn't it? No, maybe a hundred, is it two seventy? That sounds right, about two seventy, about four million a year.
So, the other public transportation money is for fixing up the bus stops, is that what it is?
Yeah, I mean, we've created, we've put these glass, these glass, what do you call them, little shelters?
Bus shelters.
Bus shelters, yeah, bus shelters, that's the...
And I'd really like to see a few more of those, because there are a lot of bus stops that still don't have that. And I called Embark about this about a year ago, and I don't know, they were just, they were supposed to call back, they never did, get back to me, sorry.
See, I'm off of that. I think that when we came in the office, we kind of pushed that. And I think the bus stops actually fall on our lap.
So, it's our responsibility?
They're relying on the ring, but then there's one ring on their depot that's wide, and you just...
Yeah.
That, uh, needs to have one. But yeah, the Terry Craft is the one who drives, who drives that bus, and she's real good about it. She tried to do one here.
Okay.
She tries to self-advertising stuff now, from that stuff. But one forty-four is all we get, we're paying one seventy-four. Now, there's about five ninety-eight, there's some fun balance there. Well, I'll put that in the notes about, about the Terry, about adding...
Adding more bus shelters?
More bus shelters. Her goal was to add one here. And then something that, um, Councilman Thompson asked about was back in one of the budget supplements, on the sidewalk supplements, that came out of this trails and sidewalks, um, that's something. I think that's what we probably do after.
Yeah.
Um, just a minute.
Yes.
First, um, this is something that I have been discussing, maybe wondering before, about, um, bike racks, continual issues that are covered by racks, um, to provide, um, we already have shade and shelter, or light. I don't know about anything, but, you know, drives, for a vulnerability to, to ride around.
Have you seen those anywhere, coming to other states?
Of course, I know, but I, I've had a constituent ask them up, um, who was dedicated by a rider, not any, what? Has routine transportation? Mr. Bundy, we're all staring at you, please.
He's the bike dude here, in the trails van. Yes, there are, there are bike parks, usually in some cities that have, in general. I mean, personally, I, you're not, you're not supposed to ride, take a bike to a tree, or a tree light, but, uh, eventually, you can see on college campuses, and that potentially damages a year of discretion for the bike.
I never experienced a scratch with a bike rack like that, um, but I'm sure that they are invaluable to a dedicated, uh, cyclist who uses, you know, second for public transport, um, to work to get from, um, all the patients who does not, who loves car. Um, we are extremely neat, and of course, winter, uh, or rain and winter, uh, type situation, particularly extremely neat with the jump in your, what you see, and you're moving the ball, for the one jumping on the bike, and it's, um, it's a lot of reasons to show. Um, so, I don't know, you know, um... I don't know if you know, or not, but I wonder if we could, um, maybe...
Just research it.
Research that.
Mr. Bundy, Steve, these are, these are all simple ground here, and, and Brandon's using this.
And secondly, the other one I could question about was the relocation of the spray car. So, are we taking away from, there must be all the, are you reading it? Is that, is that what they're talking about?
Over time, I mean, we haven't made any decisions what to do with it yet. Schools are out of there, but, um, that's gonna be a debate, we'll have, I'm sure you... What's the debate, where are you gonna put it?
Well, what are we removing? The spray car, the person that owns the train that goes off of Midwest Boulevard, right there at the, on the mountain, that, or that east, north, and northeast, the one right there, um, before you get to the brand, the gold ball towards the, that?
Dedicated tomorrow.
Because of the weather.
Sorry, my bad. Um, my, my, um, but, um, it's the antiquated equipment. We've talked about this for several years, but I mean, a thousand dollars is to, um...
To drop them, uh, people like that, like, you know, over time.
Yeah, so we just, I mean, I was just kind of like creating a, you know, concerning day fund for, for the personal...
Yeah, we, yeah, and it's not gonna be relocated, it's gonna be rebuilt, because I think it's gonna be inherited. So, it's, um, the question is gonna be there, but I'll answer that, and everybody in here can answer that.
Mm-hmm, the little, the little one right beside it.
Yeah.
Well, as, as to the creating and demand for bicycles, bicycle riders, and getting a fancy place to store the bikes, which is good, um, sidewalks are what they need to ride on to, to enhance the experience of riding a bicycle. So, we should have more sidewalks. I'm, I'd like to enhance the budget so that Brandon gets all the money he needs to build some more of those...
There is not enough money on earth for that, for Mr. Bundy.
Double, double-wide sidewalks that bicyclists and pedestrians can share, uh, to get them off the street, and then build all the bike racks and things that they need, you know. But the way to increase the demand is to give safe places for them to ride besides the street.
But I think, I think we're, I'm an apple of the world of fairness, because I'm not talking about recreational cycling, which is why we now have, these are miles and miles of trails, like a thing, and we're trying to connect to, of all cities, and we're trying to connect to, I've not heard of seeing Shawnee, so that goes with all the trails we have. That's the recreational enjoyment. I'm talking about people who literally use the bicycle to go to the grocery, use the bicycle to go to the lawn. That gives them enough of a transportation other than getting on a bus. They don't use a car. And there are members of our community, I have one constituency here, local about it, who do live their life that way. Personally, I cannot envision it, because I lived that way through college, and that was enough, four years, that was enough for me. Um, and I love my ability to jump in a car to where I want to get to. Um, but there are a lot of people who do not do that either, just as a conscious choice or as an economic reality. Um, so, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about putting out bike rest, just so you can, how you like to live, try to create a, a recreational cycling. I'm talking about a means to an increased patient.
And I was too.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sidewalks up, or depot, or any area of the place where there's a need to go to shop for good business, to get to the doctor, that's what it is.
Yeah, and you know...
Definitely, we need to have a conversation about sidewalks, because when I joined this council, I was a very vocal opponent of sidewalks, um, for mayor.
Yes.
Particularly for make-up hoods where children are transferring back and forth. However, um, what I aim to learn, thank you, Mr. Bundy, for the education, is the fact that sidewalks create their problems with regard to our ability to put them in, the width that they have to be, the size of the lot, we do not double parking cars when you have a singular driveway, because we cannot block that sidewalk, um, et cetera, et cetera. It's all things, respectfully, you probably, I'll just say, I'm sure you are, much smarter than I am in council, but, I mean, it is an eye-opening experience, like, to, uh, deal with the process of considering placing sidewalks on your, in your neighborhood. And I started, and the mayor in particular, not a beautiful, for me, about this, with the idea that we need more sidewalks, and we need to put them on everyone, particularly for kids to safely transfer to the neighborhood. However, then I realized that there were a lot of issues that they presented their institution. So, let's have a conversation offline.
And, and I'll, let me, so we can go to break. So, Brandon put sidewalks in, and he's rebuilding all these streets and these arterials. He is building sidewalks up and down Midwest Boulevard that need sidewalk. Every chance he gets, every project he has, you see, you see him building sidewalks. And, and we will want to put, I mean, as we grow, some of this new money, that's where it's gotta come from, because this is small potatoes in that oh sixty-five.
I would like to nominate Councilman Thompson to replace Reagan's sidewalk.
Is there a sidewalk?
I don't know if we really, if we really want to have a sidewalk.
But in regards to that, there, there, I mean, I think there is a traffic committee, but there's also a disability committee that continues to prioritize different areas, and that we need to prioritize what they're recommending, because Susan's point, accommodation for those, or your point, yeah.
Bundy and our staff, we have many inroads on installing sidewalks throughout the city. Uh, Brandon has unlocked the P, has unlocked the lock on that, and give money to any government, other various agencies to build this sidewalk. Where we are today, Mark, is lighter than where we started eight years ago. And we continue to do that. Sidewalks, where they're applicable, and can be constructed, or being constructed. Where we do run into issues, is lights away, and, and taking up people's yards, and, and in the residential areas, especially if they're in flash, and that's the education Susan and I got when we first came in the office. So, it's, uh, it's a process.
Let's take a break.
Besides that, I get into an argument, who's gonna maintain, definitely...
We'll get through this quicker, do you think?
A juror, you're gonna make tomorrow.
Let's get it done, we'll get it done.
Still food over here?
This one'll go quicker. Tenth Street, Tenth Street.
Pat says we need to reconvene.
I'm about to walk Harrison back in.
Let's get this show on the road.
You're gonna have to.
I heard you have his cellphone number.
I'm just teasing.
I have heard it from multiple people.
I know, is that crazy?
And I'm like, that ain't, that's.
That doesn't make sense.
That's, that's what I've said. That's not right.
Hey, Brandon, did you get funding for number one?
Those are just a resource for you to match numbers up and just, like, we've never really handed that out. I wanted to do that. It's already changed this week. Anytime it rains, you add projects on there.
Well, I've already added. From tonight, this year, we'll have.
Did you add the library irrigation and landscaping yet?
All right.
Yeah.
Oh seven oh, let's go to emergency operations.
Covering bike shelters.
That is a fund that we get some sales tax on. We get money via ACOG for nine one one. We also get money from, says charges for services. We have a contract with St. Anthony's that dispatches the ambulances. And that, that will go up this year significantly. I've told them that because it's been the same amount for way too long. So we get about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars in revenues and eight hundred and sixty eight in expenses. This pays for, as you can see, it pays for our EOC manager, our communications specialist one and the nine one one coordinator. It's really nine one one supervisor now. Capital this year is a pretty small number. Just AC coordinators, some scheduling software, some emergency dispatch software, which is medical, you know, they have to flip cards or bring all this, they'll have quicker access to medical emergencies. Unless there's any questions, let's just roll on through here. Next one is public works admin. I talked about that in the beginning. That's the administrative cost for running public works. That's where Paul's paid out of. Several secretaries, assistant public works directors, a little bit of the safety coordinator. So this one point, five million dollar budget is distributed to all the different enterprise funds.
Can I make a comment a little bit? Kind of this principle to me for the city discussing budget and yet in the streets it's not wearing above time. Not only do you have money, because the streets has a vote. And yet it's not, not like.
Paul? That is funny. Okay. Oh eight oh is inter-service, that's fleet, as we talked about earlier in the beginning, that it's the distribution to all the different, all the different departments in the city who has, who has vehicles or equipment that they work on. We have twelve, twelve people in there and half-time technician. We use that as a training position. We work through the VOTEC and we bring those kids over that are trying to be mechanics and help train them. Sometimes we give one, sometimes they show up for a couple of days, sometimes they show up for a little longer. Sometimes they actually get hired too. We've had one hired. Anyway.
Didn't he hire for anyone's son?
Yeah, yeah, he does a good job. So you can see capital outlay for them, service truck, our multi-year funding, once again, because it's really expensive, the service truck, some ADA wall-mounted vertical lift platform, and I'll see about that. That's shop equipment, diagnostic tools, some of the stuff in the past, you look at the prior years and you see the word CNG everywhere. So we have entered into these grants over the years that primarily in the sanitation departments, we buy vehicles with CNG. They're CNG trucks, big trucks. And it costs about roughly sixty thousand dollars extra to put those CNG on those trucks. Now, we get grants through ACOG to do that, these clean energy grants, I think they're called higher grants. And so that's the only reason we do that. But over the time, we then have to build the infrastructure for the CNG. So we have our own compressor stations and we have drop lines. So we slow fill, we can fast fill. And there's been some controversy that, I don't know. I mean, we haven't really had much trouble honestly with it. The technology is solid. But when we got into this COVID and we can't get trucks anymore, it's hard for us to get trucks. And I'm going to talk about that in sanitation. Well, that CNG runs really clean. So those trucks now are being used, we'll send them back to the factory. We've sent several back to the factory and had the packer, I think it's called packer.
Packer body.
The packer body pulled off and a new one put on because that CNG, they'll last a lot longer to chassis on those trucks. Peter built chassis and they're expensive and they're hard to get. So anyway, hats off to Craig and his people. They do require some federal requirements about bomb-proof stalls and there's various, there's some downside to these, like the motors that lift the garage doors, the big garage doors have to be spark.
Explosion proof.
You know, where they don't spark and can get outside. I mean, there's all kinds of rules in gave them. But anyway, fleet does a good job. This is where I told you we had nine hundred and eighty-five thousand in fuel. It's what we're prognosticated next year. The next one is surplus property. So for the new folks, we have an eBay store.
eBay?
We have an eBay store. Of course, it's virtual. In the old days, the city used to just take all the junk, pile it all up in one spot over public works, hire an auction company, come in and auction all this stuff off. By the time you paid the auctioneer, all the overtime for the employees and haul half the junk off because people would buy it because they wanted one thing out of that whole pile of junk and leave the rest sitting on the ground. We lost money. So now, now we actually, I think we have about a hundred and eighty thousand right now in where departments can sell all their old stuff. You guys declare surplus. Every council meeting, you see declares X surplus. So we sell this stuff or we'll sell old trucks or old tractors that are worn out. People buy this stuff and those departments get to put that, they have it in account, and, and they get to use that to supplement their capital outlay. So it's a really good deal for them, that capital outlay didn't come back to the council for approval. I mean, it's not a, it's not free for all spending or anything. But it's really, it's really a great program. The police use it. They sell a lot of, a lot of unclaimed stolen goods and all kinds of stuff through there. No telling what you find in there. So anyway, it's a good program. We use a half-time person to do that. It used to be a full-time person, but we split that with a secretary in fleet that does that half the time. So we pass that on to the departments. So very work, it's a good program. Next one is the one fifteen activity. This is one of our funnest accounting budgets in the whole city. So this is where, this is where the gate fees, rental fees for pavilions, where holiday lights donations, all that kind of stuff goes, okay? It goes in as revenue and then we can expend some of this out. It's not, I mean, in a big sense, it's not huge numbers, but it's still, you know, estimated revenue this year is three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We'll expense almost all that out to hit the softball fields, the baseball fields, the pavilions, park facilities. So they can go through and if they don't help on walk-alikes, there'll be supplies and contractual softball to help offset some of the wages of running the softball program and the communications stuff, keep a real property.
Is this where the, is this where the budget for the new arts council that we're building will come from?
We do not have any budget for the arts council right now. I mean, we, we have created these committees and this is, they're good committees for our community, but we are still in the infancy, I mean, we've got people on, but we haven't created mission statements and goals and guidelines and.
That'll be our next step.
So we, that's really in the spring. I shouldn't say the spring, maybe the fall. Let me say it's late summer, fall, because I'm going to have to assign that out to staff. These usually are night meetings. So, I mean, it is, if we can have these in the day, we want to have them during the day, during staff time, because we can provide better support. We do. I think Paul volunteered for one, historical committee. Who's supposed to do volunteer for arts?
Wasn't it Sarah?
I think Sarah Anka. So.
Are you asking that because you know some history?
History of art, about the arts council?
The previous arts council.
No, no.
They did operate out.
I'm asking it because I just.
They did operate out of this fund at one time.
And she accepted and she's asking what she's going to do. And I don't really have an answer.
And we don't either. We need to build that all together. We think they're all good ideas.
We're going to be having a meeting fairly quickly, bringing everybody together and develop our, our direction.
They will get out of control really quick.
So I.
Where did you say the money, the fees come from, the holiday lights, softball field?
It's just. It's just the pavilion rentals, just all the cash that comes through, baseball gate fees.
Daddy-daughter dance fees.
Yeah.
Just all kinds of...
And there's an art board here, and so you're right, they'll probably, that's where it would have to go, now, are they going to fundraise, are they going to have activities? If they did, that's where the money would go, they would could expense it out.
That's what the previous art board did, they, they did fundraising, and they did grants, and all their money came into this fund, and then they dispensed it out of this fund in the form of grants. They ran the Renaissance run as their big fundraiser of the year, years ago, ran through your ward, and that was their big fundraiser of the year, and Grayson just fizzled and...
There's still like sixty-one hundred dollars there for that, we could end up moving that maybe to something like that, some of these are no longer, so there's sixteen hundred dollars for art board, and that probably would be their money to start, start with.
And so that's my question as well, I noticed that the tree board, I guess, has nineteen oh four three, which, as Paul said, may come out of the hospital authority grants.
Just the, just the grant that was awarded for the tree this year, is what, is that my...
So where does the rest of the money come from?
This is actually just, it's a long time ago, there was money that was donated, actually, donations. Long, it's been, they've done, essentially, some money to use, probably because they have no more income, and we can't give enough, as Marcus could probably attest to, since he was such a long tenured member, gets a little bit challenging, there's no money coming into it, they, they do try to get all community members to come on and stay on, it's a challenge.
We had some very aggressive fundraisers on that board years ago, and they raised a lot of money from businesses, Rotary Club, Colonnus, they would get out and beat the bushes and seek donations, and they built up a pretty big fund balance over the years, and they've just been living off of it ever since, but...
And...
If they don't fundraise though, they don't get anything unless they write a grant.
Yeah. And then on, on the art boards, so you do acknowledge that there's that one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars to start off. So going back to conversations you and I had, I know you and me and the mayor had some brief conversations about the unity and the community on race relations, who also would like to see some budgetary line item or some funding to begin with, and I thought, I had heard you guys say that, well, we don't have any, but, there's nothing in the budget for city committees and boards. I really would like our council and the city manager's office to really consider that, and I, again, I don't think that I'm asking for thousands of dollars, but I think if we as a city establish boards and bodies that have duties, that there needs to be some level of annual line item, whether it's two thousand dollars for their operational costs, and maybe with the requirement that maybe they do do an annual event to fundraise to offset.
That's kind of the goal of these committees, is to interact with the public and have events and activities and...
Yeah.
Otherwise, there's meaning.
Can I ask a question? I agree with what you said at the beginning, could you repeat what you said at the very beginning, of you, with regard to...
There is a new committee that, actually, the idea, concept of it came around, around two thousand and twenty after the murder of George Floyd and the race tensions that were happening nationally. The mayor, whom I applaud for his leadership of taking that moment of crisis and turning it into an opportunity in our municipality to create diversity equity through a board that would specifically focus on unity in the community around race relations. I think it took the board, and Tim has more historical context, a little while to get established through nominations and applications. The board has now been meeting maybe about a year, maybe a little bit over a year, and there are board members that would like to see some level of adequate investment and funding to go along with their initiative, and I know the mayor and Tim are going to be working on bringing some things to our attention in regards to reorganizing maybe the vision, the mission, the process, the protocol of appointments and things like that.
The appointments and all that, I mean, they changed the name really without coming back to the council, and it just, it needs some help, but they, they want to work with this, it's, it's not...
And, and once, once we establish what their, we solidify what their mission is and exactly what the goals are, then we can look at the monetary issues that they may face and go back and address them. But right now, it's kind of useless to find, until we find exactly where we're going to go with it and what we're going to do with it. That hadn't been solidified.
That's what we're charging with doing.
So can I jump in here a little bit? Respectfully, what I'm wondering is, if it would be possible for us to take this on for ordinance review, dealing with, like, some of these committees that we're looking at, as well as, you know, I raised the question, Mr. City Man, or Mr. City Attorney down there, he's on, did a wonderful memo, was what they're dealing with, for example, the specialist was last week about membership on V and G, and we do have to trust him, that your document and your memo outline, you know, work on the back. But there are a number of boards, committees that are set out by ordinance, et cetera, maybe we need to look at updating how those are being administered, kind of saying, I mean, similar to our ordinances, which is why I asked the mayor originally for us to put together, like, the ordinance review committee, and take a look at those, and take a look at these committees to figure out, like, how are we going to be, how are we going to organize, if the purpose is going to be, and how are we going to be run, and then part of that would be, if there is a financial lift associated with the committee, how that would be done, I mean, is it undertaken, like, what, on a day where there's, like, a fundraising effort done, or through donations from community members, or et cetera, because personally...
Hospital grants.
Right. Personally, really quickly, this is something the mayor, I had a conversation about this and several years ago, but a beautification-type committee dealing with, you know, trying to improve the corridor down fifteen three that was running in front of the Center Rose Development, because that's pretty, I believe, not kind of a strong word, but...
Wacky.
It could, it could use some help, with that. Similarly, I think it would be of us, because we have some influence about people not keeping their yard at the end so forth, and I know some of the neighbor associations do, like the yard of the month or something like that, to see if we could have any certifications where we could solicit donations and stuff, grants and whatever, from, like, clothes and deep oats, et cetera, that we could then use to distribute for each ward, for example, to have a yard of the month or something, you know, to recognize where we've got citizens that are just going of other yawns, you know, to really make their neighborhood, make their home, make their neighborhood a, a more equal place to live, et cetera. Maybe if we could just have a meeting of the ordinance review committee...
We could add that to the ordinance review committee, this is a topic I'm...
To kind of study that out.
I think I would be opposed to the ordinance review committee coming up with bylaws or restrictions or qualifications, I think this is a more holistic conversation that needs to be inclusive of all council members, and particularly given some of the failed history of some of these boards and bodies, I think maybe a conversation at our next strategy meeting would be more equitable and inclusive of all of us, but to also go into the, the funding mechanism, again, if this city continues to create and establish boards and bodies, we need to also invest in them. And a committee such as one titled Community Unity on Race Relations, which I heard you say, the committee changed the name, but if you go to the city's official website, that is the official name on the website.
That's because...
Yes, and so, but, but again, you can't, we cannot blame committee members, they do not have the ability to get on the city website and make those changes unless there was some level of oversight and agreement with the city. Where it failed, again, I would redirect the finger at the city versus the committee. And I would argue that the focus of this committee, and the perspective of many would be, take a much higher priority than, as important as arts and culture are, so is racial diversity and inclusion in a country that has historically struggled with these issues. And in a municipality, that should be applauded for the way that's dealt with these types of divisions. So I, I would like, and I'm not making that argument specifically for this committee, but if we establish committees, if there are operational costs, that we also need to come with some adequate level of funding, and I'm not asking for twenty thousand dollars, but it may be a thousand dollars to get them started, with the hope that they can maintain some level of balance, but to just create boards and bodies and not give them the tools that they need to carry whatever initiative they have, really just creates a bunch of fluff bodies, I, I guess, that we're not really necessarily invested in, and then we are picking and choosing which ones we're invested in. Like, we are invested in the tree board, and obviously the arts council, which is still not even off the ground, has one thousand six hundred and something.
Five thousand dollars, pretty square.
But just so everyone knows, in my memo, I covered about four or five of the boards, committees, and commissions that we have. Looking back at a list that we put together with, with staff, just to kind of look at various issues, there's probably another twenty-five to thirty various kinds of boards that have been developed over the years that we, we would need to look at just to say, who wants to, what, which ones need to be committed funds and things like that, just so you know, that, that's kind of the universe where you'd be looking at.
Okay, so we'll, I think we're all in agreement, we'll do it in strategic planning, no one has an issue with that, so make sure that's on our list, and we will do that in the time we work on it.
And one last comment, I know most municipalities, whatever department oversees that committee is where maybe some money goes towards that board, if, if so.
This is, I'll just be honest, I mean, it's a little bit of a struggle for me, because I'm asking people to give up in the evening to do these, so, if we can do them during the day, it'd be better, we could provide a lot more, a lot more administrative support if we could try to do it during the day, at five o'clock or...
Try the same approach that high schools do with the coaches, you give them a stipend for, in exchange for their efforts. So if somebody agrees to shepherd one of these boards or committees, we give them, you know, a couple hundred dollars a month or something. That's possible, that's one way to handle it, so you don't have to feel guilty if I'd ask.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll take this up as strategic planning, and let's go, I think that's, we're all in agreement, so.
Do you have a question for the question, if I'm not sure if I'm not clear, because the people who work full-time, they're, that, including my staff, it's really hard to get these meetings, and so if you want to be inclusive of workers, and there's, there's so many years, like, you know, in fairness, we need to have people who actually do the work during the day, and it's hard to just get off to go to the meeting, but, you know, conversely, it's hard to do our staff after hours, so it's a trade-off, essentially.
But, but we also, most staff who attend these meetings are salaried staff, right, typically, so not, and, and most of these boards, I mean, there are only a few boards and committees that have, like, monthly meetings, most of them are quarterly types of meetings, and, and so the hope is that we're not forcing staff to take on tasks they don't want to, but that there is passion and some sort of an interest from the staff member that is taking on this initiative.
The parks and the historic were volunteers, the other one was voluntired. Right under the day, the...
Okay, picture the gay...
Okay. So Parks and Recreation, one twenty-three, I've been talking about this all night, so this is, this is where the new Parks and Rec sales tax is going to go, the twenty percent of the new point four oh one five, roughly eight hundred thousand to a million dollars in here, so, and I moved, like I said, I moved out the wages, as you see, it's zero for personal services, I'm not sure why the benefit's in there, there must be some overtime, but, so that we can use this money specifically for parks.
Travel and school.
Travel and school, okay. So we're, we are, we need to start building this money, you can see what we're doing, we're doing Tribute to Liberty, Holiday Lights, Petron Day's Parade, Mid-America Park Street Fest, Light the City, Covet and Tug, so those are in there each year.
Page seventy-six.
I have a question on this one, please. So we had some conversations about this, about the placement of videos of it in our parks, and I remember that that was one thing I had mentioned to you, for those, and make sure it wasn't a such an outlay as a result of this year, and I'm not seeing it, unless I'm just not understanding how it's broken down.
We're, we're, we get a budget for Park Master Plan, and Park Master Plan will...
So, so the two hundred and fifty thousand, which is the big, one of the big ticket items, is the Park Master Plan, one of the things we're asking is, is, you know, at some point, we have to decide what, what parks we feel like should or should not be have cameras, and we have over thirty parks, it costs somewhere between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars to put a camera in a park, depending on what infrastructure to their, we put Mid-America Park, we put security cameras in, it's forty thousand dollars to do that, and that's because we already have a building, Brandon's in phase two of building Mid-America Park, the things I, the, we also want to look at these, these cameras, Susan, there's a company in our town that does this, that, that are affordable, and we can move them around where we have problems, and make it maybe a little more holistically, I don't know if we can really afford the cameras in every park in support of, I mean, some of these are really tiny parks, so...
Right.
We, we urge you, we're, we're...
And then that same thing, I'm going to ask the other question that I've thought of before, is for western facilities, the one in particular, I had discussed as well in regard to W P Hapkinson, and you have bathrooms there, yet they're not accessible, they're part of the hangar, essentially, that they're not accessible for parks, and so are we, are we going...
Yeah, Brandon is going, is engineering a, go ahead, Brandon, or W P specifically.
So the Trail Master, so the Trail Master Plan will kind of right-size and talk about the many, but in the meantime, we're going to try to do a corral for portability, and I know that can be divisive as well, but it's a low-cost temporary solution, and so I, I think that's what we'll try and see how it works. The benefit to it is you can put it out there and see if there's demand for it, and the other benefit is if it gets vandalized, it's easy to switch out, so it's easier on staff to maintain. But that's not to say that in fact it can be put there in the future, the Park Master Plan, we're going to kind of rely on that to determine which parks need bathrooms, essentially.
And this is a lot of my comments, so that we can have, because I don't want to stop the for the parks here really quick, but I'm still the loss that we pay to put bathrooms in at that location for the park and the hangar as the outdoor venue type of thing, so we have function restaurants there, but instead of allowing people to access them, where I put in portability corrals, like, I understand what you're saying, it just ultimately does not make sense to me, you know, from the perspective of, we've already built it, it's not like we need to build it, build it, it's already there.
Well, part of, part, that's, that's a two-part issue. Part of the problem, the way they were built and the way they were constructed, they're, they're secluded, and as we've experienced in a regional park, they'll get destroyed. And, and then the second part of it is that we don't have the personnel, because we've talked about this, we don't have the personnel to go down there and monitor them, and lock them up at night, and, and also people sleeping in them, and things of that nature, so when we designed, or when it got designed and built, they failed to take in SEPTED into, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, into consideration when we built these. These should have been built out where they could be visualized, where they, where the police department could have eyes on.
We paid consultants to build the park, to design the park, we did revisions, we did community needs, we did all of those things, and now we're saying, okay, aren't that...
We screwed up.
Essentially.
We screwed up, so we're going to have to go back and re-engineer it, but... But they will get destroyed. Uh, I mean, the park wasn't even open a week, and, and it got damaged, and the signs on the doors got taken down. So, you know, we, uh, we learned a lesson on that.
And can I ask another question, just real quick? So similar to what we're in, as far as the quarter-potting corrals, I think, in our, is it possible for us to, I don't know how long the park studies are going to take to get back, but is it possible for us in some of the bigger parks, like where we have, or where we have issues with vandalism already, to at least do something like with the deer cams? Like, I mean, at least we have some kind of video, you know, it's like in the opposition on Dog Park, and the dogs being baited up there. Um, like, can we not at least, you know, I mean, what's the, like, how do deer cams, like, something in there?
I think that.
Yeah, so we talked to the police chief about this, and they have a special investigation unit. And what they typically do is have camera, covert cameras designed for them. And so the vendor they had been using had retired, so we're, we're going to get with them and have them look, say, hey, what can we design and build, similar to like a stealth deer cam where you could put it out there? The other thing we've looked at is renting those trailers that you would park out there, much like you see at like Walmart or construction sites, so that would be an option, that you could move them to the parks that you're having trouble with. Uh, the, the cameras would provide some deterrent. Lots of time, the people intent on doing evil are going to disguise themselves and do evil no matter what. So we could put tons of infrastructure there, and it still may not catch them. Lots of time, it is a deterrent, and so, especially if they're visible. So those are some of the things we've got in the works that we're looking at now.
And also, the placement of cameras need to be driven by, uh, the volume of use, and also police reports that are generated as a result of that location. So there's a data-driven part of that. You know, obviously, regi- regional park, Atkinson has become an extremely popular park. One park that we don't suffer a lot of vandalism is the one at the, uh, Welcome Center. And it's one of our higher-volume parks, so, uh, there's a lot of data that has to be, but I agree with you. Uh, we need to have some visualization, especially when we have a lot of expensive infrastructure invested into it, so.
Okay, so what else is in, in here, just real quick, I want to go over this. Um, tennis and basketball court resurfaces and upgrades. Our tennis courts are, are, um, they need resurfaced, and people use our tennis courts a lot, so that needs done. I added, we've talked about the Mid-America Park Phase Two, which is funded, but, um, we talked about, they had cut a basketball court out of there originally, instead of leaving it in there, and I really think it does need to be in there, so I added that in.
That's where the four hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
Where's Spirit Playground?
Spirit Playground is regional park.
Next to the Rotary Pavilion?
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
That's the one we all built together, and it's going to cost way over a million dollars, so we are, we are piling money together.
I thought we had that funded.
I thought we did too, we put in a bond, we did. It's been saved up for several years, but we're a long way from getting there. There'll probably be a million-dollar bond. So a million dollars times two hundred thousand to five, times just a million, so we're, we're third here. We'll get the Mark, the Park Master Plan done, and maybe we can do two years at once next year.
And I just want to thank you, our city manager and councilman Thompson. The Mid-America projects were two thousand and eighteen GeoBond projects, and kind of like Councilwoman Eads was saying, there were studies done, and by the time we got into implementing those plans, inflation, everything, costs went up. And the city manager, and, uh, was wonderful enough, and the vice-mayor was very helpful in this, and making sure that those commitments that would be very important to my community would be incorporated in this year's budget. With that, when do we expect the work to begin on, on those? Will it be within this fiscal year, or do you think next year?
Yeah, so the Mid-America Park, uh, we cleared all the trees, actually, they did either, I think today is when they took the equipment out. Uh, and that was to pave the way for bidding, but I call it Phase One. Um, some people call it Phase Two, because of the trails, so it gets a little confusing. Uh, I'm waiting on the consultant, we're going to get the bid specs together and work it out. Uh, the future phases, um, the net, we, we have two funded, federally funded phases. So the first one will be moved out yesterday, it's been a while. Uh, the second one, we're still waiting on, uh, some issues from the Native American Tribe and, uh, the federal government. Um, we've been waiting on them for years, so we've been working on that. But it'll be designed, ready to go when we get the funds. The basketball court will be, since it's city-funded, uh, the plan is to start building the first phase, and then put the basketball courts out, so they'll actually be kind of a phase one and a half.
Can you name that?
No, not, but the Osage Tribe and, and require you to do all this check for any material, or, 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 locations, even, uh, there's the non-Osage country.
Because there's federal dollars involved in the construction, they can, they can demand a historical study of the site.
As I say, they're, they want to be involved.
Write us a check.
Also, we included the safe, the finish, the fence, the golf course, twenty-five out of here, and twenty-five out of there. Okay, next is one forty-one, which is transmendment, or craft, which is per, per dollars imbalance, the C B B G programs, um, which is personal services. This, it gets into her actual programming, which is grant activities, thirty-nine, thirty-four. You can see, um, all the different programs, housing and rehab, general administration, her housing contingency, senior, social services, before and after school, and risk, youth and family, primary systems. Terry has a brochure that she can provide you if you're interested in all of these programs, so I recommend it. So, I may have all heard, Ashley students over there.
Who did you say?
Terry Craft.
Terry.
Terry Craft. This is also transitional housing, this rehab, that is, we have some houses that we use capital chairs to, to, uh, for, yeah, qualify, to, to, all these, to, to qualify people to be in those houses. And Leah Sow has some of the housing too, for battered women, so it's a good program. Um, also in here is, I think this is, I'm trying to, trying to, uh, let's go over the national, one forty-two. This is where military's grant housing activities, once again, these are dollar-to-dollar, actually, cost to the city. But this is, this is where we house that two hundred thousand dollar grant. So this is for transitional housing over here, and the home housing program. The home housing program, for those that are new, we would give a two hundred thousand dollar grant to the home housing, I guess, for it. And that is to assist home buyers in buying new houses. And the interest rates where they're at, um, we have not, I don't think we're going to go for any money this year, because we can't spend the money that we have, because we're not giving any applications out there, it's, it's, sad. But anyway, that's where that's at. I have to live in a house of five years, so you lose a little bit of this, and, um, I think there is some, uh.
Yes, it's, it's.
Yes, it, um, is there, is there a question? I need to propose it for the first time, um, buyer's money, um, that Terry can research the program for.
We have money, yeah.
Right, is there any commission for us going ahead, because you were saying we might have approached to try to get more of a little, since we have a, a little over balance, essentially? Does it have to be spent in that fiscal year, or am I starting to be?
We have some years to spend it, I don't know how many it is.
Because I'm just thinking, you know, I've always been a proponent of us trying to get more money, but not, so.
No, we're not abandoning it in any way, we just can spend all we have, so Terry's a free person. And she, she can't spend it, she can't ask for it. It's not a way we can ask for it, so we can spend it, maybe we can ask for it, and we will. It's a good progress, and then she ran that mid, middle income program, which is a possible program, because a lot of military people there, they have a hundred percent financing on their houses. Because of the, uh, well, they don't really have any money to fix a house up, so they buy these houses, they don't have any equity, so we have middle-income housing assistance program. And I think we've, we've, you know, you're not supposed to get those every year. That was a really good part, and Terry, she, she is amazing, nice and mature, she's all, all over, and working hard, she's. Pass through brands, one forty-three, it's just various brands that pass through the city. We don't have any this year, we have to do it again.
You guys, you kind of wish you had.
We, we, so we're not getting any budget, so.
Yeah.
There's nothing, all this weird issue, it's just all, um, grandparents, uh, government, so. So the next one, this is where Mr. Bundy passed out, he passed out the, everyone should have the C I P list. This is something we've been working on for years. We told you about this list, we're, we're, we're not here to go over one hundred and ninety projects, I believe. You can start seeing where we're at, and kind of where the priorities are at, and, and starting on one fifty-seven, this is where people come to the line of share of the, the point four oh one five, then, for the new sales tax. So it starts with.
Not new.
Not new, rollover.
Rollover continuation.
Thank you.
Here again, it's a direct result of the city man and his staff taking this project down, because the ones of us that have been here for just a couple of years were beaten to the eye shut about giving something in there about, these people were calling in for drainage, uh, meaning, those issues. And there never was really a process to, to identify and keep them on a list. It's a direct result of Tim, Vaughn, Brian, and Brandon put this together. And, uh, this is, the list is long, but compared to what the list was two or three years ago, it didn't exist. So this is light years of where we're at. So, you know, things like this, things like the equipment, uh, the fleet replacement plans for the fire department, this is, this is an example of a complete turnaround, correctly, on one, mayor and student. It's a complete turnaround, what we've been basing it, four or five years ago. This, this stuff like this did not, it, I said, it's a duration, it's a line, this stuff is, you know.
Absolutely.
Well, with, with knowledge comes ability, our sales, sales tax, our citizens' continuation, and, and now, you know, with the master study, we can see what that is, because we're far, we're not, as I said, we're only, only thing we can do, is a lot of defining, and, and even add to, so this is a work in progress. It's a public, we didn't share it today, but it's, uh, it's.
Is it all over, is it tied up?
Yeah.
Thank you, it's been, it's been a long.
He's on that committee as well, Brandon, he was welcome before Brandon became the director, the engineer, and he really kind of took this on, because nobody in the city, it was his, it was his number one structure, and he, he took this on. They went from a three-page, a half-mile, one-on-one, this master plan, a lot of. It'll give you some knowledge on what's funded, and how much, what funding comes out of, the max of the numbers. I wish we had the numbers in our budget, I have my angry budget, to, um, so. But you can take the list, the, the list of this year, which is three point four million, uh, we have revenue five oh seven, and we spent it all, it's a new master study, and we spent it all this year, so, a little fund, yeah. So we, we could follow up these projects, and basically, we kind of got to a point where I honestly, where Brandon said, this is all my staff can do, this is, we can't manage, you know, this. So here, Brandon, so I want to give.
I can leave the room.
Yeah, we might have to add a third project in here, I don't know, we can, we can, you know, all work over there, but we'll see.
Just think about it, it's, they're being identified, and our answer's critical.
That is true, that's the first component, being all identified, and it's, it's, today, I'm, I'm, so. Brandon, why don't you quickly walk through, there's a three point four million dollar, this is the, a lot of, so this, and these are all in this list, by the way, you can cross reference this, when you see one fifty-seven, and, uh, attending fund, all, that's where it's, 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 it's neat about this, is you can go back to the budget account, or like this. Somebody asked you a question, and you're just fit, if you can get back, I believe, change your figure back. Okay, Brandon?
So this list is living documented, changes daily, sometimes a couple of weeks it goes by. So if you have questions about this, you can ask me. There's reasons why we prioritize things differently, there's obviously going to be some disagreement to how we prioritize things, but if you have questions, you can ask me. There are, all the drainage, there's a, a drainage list that sometimes we will reference, that is not this list, okay? So the drainage list, uh, is compiled by a lot of our complaints from citizens, and we have a separate list for that, that's not necessarily a funded-type thing, but, but we keep an inventory, and our stormwater master plan are, uh, is going to help us prioritize that list. So just something to note, if you're looking through this, looking for a specific project, and it's not in here, there's probably a reason for it, or we don't know about it, so just call me if you have questions.
We did a half million dollars for drainage.
Yes.
Infrastructure repairs, and singles, and.
So on, on capital outlay, uh, Twenty-Ninth Street Bridge Engineering, as the mayor pointed out, it's number one on the list, and it's been funded for a few years now. Uh, we have the project ready to go, hopefully bid August, that's to replace the Twenty-Ninth Street Bridge over Crutcher Creek. That's the final matching funds. Air Depot Southeast Fifteenth to Reno, we had, we were fortunate enough to receive ACOG funds to start on that project. That's going to resurface, reconstruct portions of Air Depot, uh, as part of the Air Depot corridor study. Southeast Twenty-Ninth Douglas Westminster, that project was also recently awarded. So these are, those two projects are probably three, four years out. But we have to start funding, uh, engineering for those. Uh, Southeast Fifteenth High Wasi Drainage, uh, Councilman Ferris isn't here, but that is a, a really big issue out east, and, uh, Terry's helped us get some EPA funding for it, and we, we started some seed money for that. Uh, Strike Project.
Did you hear some calls, some calls, so, right?
Yes, very, very fortunate there. Uh, the Strike Project, it is a hundred percent federal funds, but we do have to pay for engineering of those funds. Uh, thirty-five thousand, uh, relatively to the, what we get, is, is pretty nominal fee. Uh, Reno Glen Haven Signal Improvement, that's actually a pretty recent project. Since it's city-funded, it can go a lot faster, we don't have to jump through as many hoops. We actually already have, uh, preliminary engineering done, and so that's, that's a project that probably will happen pretty soon. The Sooner Road Railroad Crossing, uh, the newspaper came up with, uh, a complaint, ran a story about it, but it's on Sooner Road, um, between Tenth and Twenty-third Street, it's really rough, it's been rough for years, so we put some. So, we put some money in there to work with the county to fix that. Refer, resurface shared centerline roads, so, uh, roads with Choctaw, Tacoma Park, uh, mainly. Those two cities have a hard time paying their half if we resurface a road. And so, um, we're hoping that we can get some federal dollars if we go ahead and engineer some, uh, do some plans now. And we might be more competitive for that. Signal Phase Seven, that's another signal improvement project. Uh, drainage infrastructure repairs, that was a request by Public Works and, uh, Engineering. And, and that's so we can have some money to address issues as they arise. Sinkholes, um, when we get a flood, things like that. Uh, Maple Drive, uh, high school pipe replacement, there's a pipe that's failing near the, uh, the Ballmer High School that we need to replace, that. Yep. Uh, and this infrastructure's, I mean, from the fifties, sixties, and sometimes it, it fails. Um, the neighborhood Walmart drainage flume, I'm sorry, we don't come up with better names for that. But in front of the neighborhood Walmart along Reno, there's drainage flume, and it's starting to fail and start to collapse. So, we put some money aside for that. Yeah. The sewer line extension Twenty-Ninth and Douglas, we have, uh, some city land and economic development opportunity, uh, south of Twenty-Ninth Street. Um, west of Douglas, I think some called that the Conset Hutt property, maybe? Eighty-eight hundred. But that's, that doesn't have water sewer, so we're going to start getting water and sewer to that site. Northeast Twenty-Third Sidewalk, Air Depot to Skiff, we got a, a grant, it's reimbursable grant, so we're going to out, we're going to spend the four hundred thousand, and then it gets reimbursed. Uh, but that's to go from Crutcher's Creek, Creek School to, uh, across, basically, American Glass. Um, mid-block school flashers post-road, that was, I'll take the hit on that one. When we upgraded the school flashers, uh, a few years ago, uh, we went from, uh, analog system to digital system. And there were, uh, a set of, uh, one, two, three, four, on post-road. So railroad was not actually in a school zone, if you looked at a map. But I thought, well, why, why do we do that? And we didn't have enough money, and so we omitted those two, we just pulled them out and made post one long school zone. And as much as I want to fight the reasoning behind it all, the, the crowds are right, and we're going to put it, we're going to put it back. So, um, there's a lot of issues with site distance and, um, knowledge of the school zones, so we need to put it back for safety reasons.
Actually, to discredit, that school zone is sort of fifty mile long.
Yeah.
And if you enter them either end, you don't know how far it goes, and you don't know on the other end if it's still in the back. So, what he did, the value, the year, the last time, it was still on Twenty-Third. Let everybody know that the school zone is active. So he actually probably saved us a hundred thousand dollars in additional money to do that, so. Once again, you're pretty.
Well, I, I over, yeah, I over-engineered it, and it, it, yeah, it's kind of like you can't see over the horizon.
If you don't know the school is active.
If there's a sign of it, it's full zone, it's in the flag.
And used to junior high principal, high school principal couldn't get along, and they never could agree on what time you were going over the box. So that's another reason we asked that two sets of school hours there, was they were the timing of all.
One plus two, better, nine, nine times tickets, you know, you did concession for.
You're losing.
You're losing.
And there's a lot of these involved, there's still a bunch of doors, so you can't just go there, and you can't shock him, and you can't, and so, it's like a school zone with, you know, reflectors. And you get some of those reflectors down the bottom line, and there's four reflectors, you should go in the school zone. Wouldn't that solve the problem?
I didn't, I didn't say anything, probably, you're, but it's forty-five, that's fine.
Well, he's going to, he's going to take, he's going to take the hit on that one, he should also take the hit on if he discovers ten million dollars and take it off.
Yeah, well, that, that's the Air Depot and the Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street, and, uh.
It's ten million dollars.
Did you own a bow tie in Atlanta?
No, I do not own a bow tie. It, and, it's competitive, I just.
And, and yes, it's competitive, but I was attending a meeting with the mayor, but by far, the city grants, I mean, I heard people saying, like, it's so much. They don't have our hot.
Play the game.
Ten million bucks, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, thank you.
The last two years, the city received forty-three million dollars for the, for the, do a lot of our projects, so. And it is a competitive process, it's all regional.
How long has it worked with forty-three million?
Okay, how many years?
I guess we just celebrated this tenth anniversary of the city.
Yeah.
Very cool, but, uh, so, uh, we built a lot of our four line projects, and all of that, the eighty, twenty grants that you got.
Yeah, most of.
And I, and we do that probably, I don't know, underneath, that's close, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to say that we punch above our weight.
It's good.
And, and the, the last project, real quick, is the, so we got the Air Depot project. Um, but as corridor study pointed out, we need to do something with utilities. There's a lot of aerial utilities there, there's actually water and sewer that's under Air Depot. Uh, I know one thing that will break the water line, is put a brand-new road over it, and then it just gives up the ghost, so.
Oh, shit.
Yeah, by digging up the road, it's, so. Yeah, and it, it, that's not eligible for federal funds, so we're going ahead, use city funds to start worrying about the utilities. So, that's, that's it, and I'm, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Item twenty-seven on this big list, it's, uh, two and a quarter million dollars, basically to study microplastics? How big a deal is microplastics? Is this something we should worry about?
Well, it, I'll defer to Paul, because this list, as I said, is not just mine, it's, I, I corral it. But Carrie, what I do with ACOG and, and transportation, Carrie Iverson does with, um, OWRB and the, and the water and the wastewater. And this is her, her thing, so, I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, it's nine o'clock, so let's, we might as well try.
So, just answer is yes, it's important, that's good enough to make.
It is important to do, this is the OWRB, the, uh, OWRB had some money, uh, that they did not, and I had the recipients. This is a project we were kind of going to have, because it's an issue that our water resources would be very difficult. And so, this allows us to apply for the grant, Carrie, it's actually Carrie and Barbara's, who should help them together, try to, they have that money, and we're, we're, so. It's a bigger issue, you see such a lot of de-boss, de-boss is kind of an extension of microplastics, and the, 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 the.
You got him, you're going to get him started.
I got him started, I'm. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's more to speak of, we need to, you, the new council would be, they, on the NBBR issue, that, you'll understand that. Okay, and Carrie, I mean, she finds her money for us, I mean, she would really do it on her side, too. And she's got almost ten million dollars in her, okay? So we're going to, some of these are just really basic, but if you have questions, stop, we can go a little quicker now. One seventy-two is the Walker Fund, that's capital improvements for, uh, water improvements. And this is for capital, this is capital infrastructure, we've gotten people out of this, we used to pay for people out of this, if we didn't have enough money in the water. But, and it's just basically operation maintenance for the water system. What we have this year, we're just doing water well rehabs, and tractors, and some payment improvements. The next one is the sewer, uh, water, it says sewer improvement, it's really for, it's system improvement, I'm sorry, one seventy-eight, it's really for water improvements. This is a fifty-seven cents on per thousand gallons. And once again, it's for capital outlay, it's to replace water lines, we're doing a water line on Air Depot in the west, sixteen to Twenty-Third. And with the citywide, the water lines that have to be replaced, just on a routine basis, this is a.
Quick question on those, and please keep, answer it quickly if you can. Um, I noticed that, like, there was a huge increase, going from eight, on the expenditures, from eight thousand to sixty-eight thousand, from the previous year to this year. And then on the right side, um, under final budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, it's thirty dash O two, claims council approved. So, are these technically things that have been, already been brought before council, that have been, I, I didn't, I don't understand how the next fiscal year items could have already been approved?
Okay, and you're on one seventy-eight?
Yes, I'm, I'm on page eighty-nine, sewer backup one eighty-four, am I a page ahead of you already?
Yeah, you're.
Okay, sorry.
I'll page up to you.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, sewer backup, so that's what we talked about, eighty-nine, this is, this is, these are just claims, um. Yeah, that, that term claims council approved, that would be things that, that are over the hundred thousand dollar mark. So we're going to talk about that in the second session, like, we've had three sewer claims, two, seven, one, and one one, and we could sell another one, so.
But technically not approved, budgeted for approval.
It could be a, it's a, yeah, it should say clients, honestly. And it's one of those just, if someone put that in fifteen years ago, it's a, it's a.
Okay, next one, sewer construction, so this is, this is the sewer construction, and what's important about this, is we've talked about this ninety cents going over to capital improvements in fifty-seven. Which is left all over the podcast, but we ended up not doing that. And, and we may do that in the future, but right now, we're in a position where, where we have this wastewater treatment plant that has NBBR issues. And we have these light tech curbs that we put in, where that old building, last technology were at, and we're testing those. If it works, it's going to be seven million dollars to replace the NBBR that's in those places, uh, leaving sewer. So, we need to continue to leave this money here for now, until we get the sewer problem figured out, and we're in, we will, we will learn to fix this, and this is not the sewers. So, we need to learn and practice, so. Next one, sewer utility, that's just say there are ACOGS, custom service department, collecting, collecting the utility fees. Next is capital sewer, Richard Stroffman, it's back in one seventy-two, that's Walker. And this is, uh, about half of, so, half of the, the phase one of the sewer, we talked about. So we have three phases. Little four phases of the, the, uh, three stations. The first phase is to fix these listings, right, we'll talk about that, so, but we don't really need, uh, they'll give money, right, now we have money, we're going to use it, and we have the place, we have to be ready for the job now. So it's something that a lot of little three and fours, but for now, let's, let's get these, these listings fixed. So, we're working on those now, because we already have them, but aside, if you fix them eventually, um, we're going to be engineering, there's electrical issues, and we're going to do all that. But I put in, to fix all three listings, I put in nine hundred thousand dollars here, this is sewer capital. I put nine hundred thousand out of one ninety-two, which is the sewer done, okay? So that's phase one, and this is little, you know, you have to add any extra, and, 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 and. So, four phases, this is phase one, it's going to be forty-five.
Will that affect the moratorium?
I think that we, it, it could, certainly could, it could either, it could either, um. I can not eliminate the issue, because you still have phase two and phase three, where you have to build, build a bunch of the houses, not big enough lines, move, move, uh, seven, seven, seven. But this will get us everything we have on it, and hopefully, then we'll look and have pretty simple look and see what we've worked with, if we lift it at that point, and that's capacity, a study of capacity. Master plan being done as well, and the master plan will help with the city line, is city line, where this, 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 here are also the city line. So, could it affect the moratorium, if it, if it needs to be done, from the engineers, I ask.
Okay.
That's the, we, we, we. And I'm on the issue here, so we're going to build, if we, if we have to, basically, we.
There's another item, Small Potatoes, it's fifty thousand dollars for a sewer and Carburetor Alley. What is Carburetor Alley, and what is the, and what is the?
It's in water.
No, it's in.
What is the vision for Carburetor Alley?
The vision for Carburet, I'm glad.
The leak, this, right, that is located on Air Depot, immediately adjacent to the intersection with A. D. Boulevard, over by where the C. C. P. Federal General.
The cache.
The cache.
And it's where the old Carburetor Repair.
There you go. That's why it's called Carburetor Alley.
They, they, you're so smart.
I named it, they were naming it some stupid name, and I said, no, it's Carburetor Alley.
That's it, so we're, uh, trying to create a, a, a certain amount of area, you know, restaurants, um, fun, we get several hotels. And, um, you got to get around the, the, for, you can bike park there, 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 there.
If you have a covered bike, if you have replaced it.
Slowly investing in helping get, that's, we're welcome.
Excellent, okay.
It's going to be cool, it's just going to take.
That would be a perfect place for us to have, they can, for, bike area.
I like that.
Because you could drop your bike there and go into one of these establishments, they were, and then.
Get drunk.
Get drunk, bust your nose, go to St. Anthony's, and we're all good.
Yeah.
You know, we are being, it would be, it would get.
I should have not said that.
You want to give me a.
All your fault.
Okay, and we can, any of these kind of deals, just keep them low, and we'll give you a lot. I've been leaning so far back. Okay, one eighty-nine, utilities capital outlay. This is, uh, so this is just where some money's parked, the money that's parked in here, why it's called utilities capital outlay, I didn't name this, this came from somebody else. But what's in here is the, um, Suter Town Center Loan, that we did the fifty million dollars on, we get, we're carrying that money, we get some money. And so, there's about one and a half million dollars in there for that, and we're going to probably need that money, that money will be, be used to Suter Town Center, obviously, with that. There's some money that Paul parked in there, I actually parked it in there, but reparked it in there, rep, reparked it in there. And it's the san- sanitation transfer station, we need to box the equipment out of that, but there to recondition the transfer station, but then we stock it for the county to use in the transfer station. So, it's a, it, it is money to really help long-term solutions for, for sanitation department, how it uses the transfer station, so. So it's a, it, it is money to really help long-term solutions for, for our sanitation department, how we're gonna use the transfer station, so we're behind that, of course. And that's really, I mean, in front of that. Next is the sanitation fund, and you can see, sanitation fund has revenue in nine point three million, seven point eight. Don't, don't, um, get your hopes up too much on that one, because what we did is, we can't, it takes two years to get trucks. So we went ahead and borrowed the year that we're in right now, instead of next year, so we're not trying to get them, put in your after. Probably next year sometime, we'll come back, get some more money.
Those are expensive trucks, too.
They are expensive trucks, they don't, uh, but this is, this is a good budget to have, we're gonna do a job, and we have a great sanitation department. We probably, honestly, just, just so Paul would, Paul, uh, will be heard here, I'll say it. We, we charge fifty-five dollars to go out and do pickup, and, and we are really stretched thin sometimes, we're three and four weeks behind, the storm will cause us to be behind. But we probably do need to raise that rate, not sanitation rates, they're already on the, the C P I anyway, and then we're gonna have to deal with, in time, we're gonna have to deal with three cycling, that's another. We're gonna need to say, talk to you about that one. But, um, that pickup is really, really not covering anywhere near our costs, and we, we need, we really need to raise that. The public sector is, I mean, private sector is three hundred, probably, we don't have charts, three hundred million, but, but we need to, we need to increase that a little, because it is stretching us too thin, we may create another crew on that sometime.
On that, Republic Services, I know I keep coming back to it, it feels like it's costing an arm and a leg, and I know last conversation, you said you guys are actively looking for alternative avenues that would be more cost-friendly, or somewhere in the long term, or we could handle it in-house, maybe, I don't know, but just.
Yeah, we did, you're right.
Wanted to emphasize that, yeah.
That's just where we get, we get a few fines and we find we get donations. We save up a little money and buy trucks and put five boxes or animal box there. Next one's hotel motel. This is just pass through. This is all the money we talked about and where and when. We went over those budgets earlier. Two thirty's customer deposits. That's just where we house money. Four bonds are the same. A few thousand dollars there. L and H, we talked about life and health. I think the most important thing, and we had a meeting with the unions and retiree representative this week. And everyone approved the, everyone voted unanimously to approve a rate increase to L and H. We are self insured, even though I told you earlier it's a possibility deal and we have reinsurance on top of that. So I've been finding money out of ARCA, out of opioids to help supplement this. Cause we've been damaged by opioids. I mean, I can show what happened in our way to damage. We were out of finding places to supplement this. We needed a fairly significant rate increase. And we settled on, and we settled on transferring. We've done this before. Transferring money out of the general fund, out of PWA, out of police and out of fire, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That offset a large rate increase. So the rate increase will be six and a half percent. It's three point two five picked up by the employee, three point two five picked up by the city. Protecting hopefully two point seven million fund balance. We have a gap that from the aggregate insurance to what our potential maximum liability is. And we always try to fund for that. That's why this fund balance is really important. It's a really complicated fund, but it is. We have a really good company called Insurica that helps us and their actuaries help us do this. And so I think this is, this is, everyone was comfortable, the retirees, the unions, the regulars, employees, all represented. This is, I think, the best case scenario for us.
I did a calculation and if I'm right, the city spends about twenty-three thousand dollars per employee every year on benefits.
Usually I use about a thirty-three percent number of whatever their salary is.
But I mean, I just divided it equally among everybody.
That's just on age.
If, yeah, and that's a, that's a substantial amount of.
Can we do something other cities don't do? We, we provide insurance to retirees. And we, and we had a committee, unions, council person, we had employees and we came up with a solution. And that's we, the retiree pays sixty percent of the total cost and the city pays forty percent. And it's still expensive, but it's a reward for working here for a really long time. And we said this now, that you don't, after eight, it's a weird law, that after eight years, you have to provide retiree insurance. And we don't have to do it at a hundred percent, or at sixty, forty. So what we've done is the longer, you have to be here. The numbers are not a hundred percent in my head, but let's just say twenty years. And then you're gonna get so much of that subsidy, forty percent subsidy, up to thirty years, then you get the full forty percent. So it's more fair to the city and it's still a reward to the employee who's worked here a long time. So that's.
And they agreed to it?
Everybody agreed to it, including the unions, cause there, that's where most of the retirees are at, is their pension systems there. They retire when they're fifty or something. So, okay.
And we did, if you guys remember a couple of years ago, we did that at the same time they were having a riot in downtown. They opened the city with the problems that the insurance down there and they were ready to skin some of those people a lot of times. We were able to deal with them. Again, leadership, we got them on the table, we got them in the room. It went a lot better, it's always me and, who else was it?
I can't even remember. City? Like I said, this is insurance kind of.
But it was, it wasn't difficult to explain to them how important it was to work with the city. Because like I said, Oklahoma City, they were, they were skinning something down there.
Well, a lot of cities just they take the peak, you know, they retire and, you know, you get a retirement and then here you get this massive insurance deal. It eats a lot of your retirement out of it.
The state is very much that way.
And you know, I can tell stories. I've been weekly, it's like, I can tell stories. I, I got trained early on by Mr. Charles Johnson. It's a pencil, it's a pencil and eraser. Okay, next is GEO bonds or capital improvement revenue bonds. I'm sorry, not GEO, capital improvement revenue. This is just pass through dollars for the paid hotel and conference center. The twenty-five cents for capital improvements is going in here to pay for the hotel conference center. And that's how we got in the situation we did with that. Capital improvement. The council wanted a hotel conference center, which is how they paid for it. But then it took away, we only get about seven hundred thousand dollars out of that quarter penny for capital improvements. Next is a GEO bond. This should, this is a two thousand and two model and it needs closed out seventeen hundred dollars. Or it's issued. Next is a two thousand and eighteen GEO bond. This is, this is Trump's one. This is, yeah, there's multiple. There is no expenditures this year. We're just finishing that, paying for all these different GEO bonds that we've been working on since two thousand and eighteen. Little contingency in there. We will get completely finished with the GEO bonds and we'll talk about what we can do with that contingency. There's some legal reasons. You can't just go spend it on Christmas trees at the park. I mean, we've got to. We've got to, as much as I would like to, but we have to spend it for specific purposes, but we'll work with that and we'll work with the guys on that. Bond has lots of ideas, believe me. Two thousand and eighteen, more GEO bond. And this is the boost, what's left on this one is, is, this is the booster station in John Conrad Golf Course. And we have a booster station electrical works still up to be done, but we'll probably close this out. Next one is a two thousand and twenty-two issue. This was the last one, the police fire training facility. And there's about a hundred and thirty grand left in that whole build, two, two point, whatever the original was.
Is it four point seven?
Yeah, it's about five million.
Yeah, it's like five point seven million. Yeah, it's five million seven five four seventeen. There's a hundred and thirty grand left over. And I think what we all agree to do is we need a backup center for nine one one. And we're gonna figure out, we'll use that money to create a backup nine one one center over at the police fire training. I think it's a good use of funds. Next is three ten. This is a disaster relief. Where's this money come from? Well, this money comes from, originally, we had a little uptick some years ago. I can't even tell you how long ago, cause I've been here for twenty-four years, but some time ago. And we took a million dollars out of the general fund and moved it over here for disaster relief. Cause every time, it used to cost more than a million dollars to clean this city up when we had a tornado and you had ice storms. And ice storms, which is what really gets us. Ice storms affects this entire city. And the last ice storm we had, I thought I wrote this down, it cost us, it was a crazy many dollars.
About eight million, wasn't it? Ten million?
Reimbursed?
We're close.
We're still getting reimbursed. Last ice storm cost ten million dollars to clean this city.
Any kids you could sleep with that?
Ten million dollars. So we keep about, I mean, what, how we've grown this fund is not, we've not taken it from anybody. And this, this wasn't my idea. I don't know whose idea was. I wish I could take it, pray for a lot of us in this room. Maybe it was long time, but we, if we use our own employees to monitor what the contractors are doing, take pictures, now you have an iPad and you do all this stuff, you get paid to do that. And so our employees are already paid, so we were able to shift employees to go over and do this. We, we would get customer service and people. Volunteers. We would get animal control. I mean, all over the city.
Donna did it.
Donna, Donna in my office did it. Went out, spent a weekend following the, the contractors around. And so we've been able to build this fund up over all these storms, just seven point eight million dollars. So.
And you also can win contracts right away too.
Yeah.
Cause you've got money.
We, every year we do, we get a contract ready to go for disaster relief. And we have to front this money before we get any reimbursement.
We're still getting money from.
Forever. We're still getting, we got one the other day.
A check from FEMA.
Now, what else do we, we do one other thing out of here and it's just, just cause we were looking for a place to do it. There's no real reason other than we have some money. But Stroh, when he goes out and mows all his yards with contractor, we pay for that out of here. And then we go put leads on the houses and the money then comes back to us after the tax assessor gets done and they're treasured. If you speak the word, the house sells, we'll get on in the back.
Which we recovered, what, about ninety percent?
We're, we keep up, yeah, around ninety percent. So we stay ten percent on the books. So we're not, we're not fronting a lot of money here. So I keep, keep Stroh going. We pay a little bit out here and out of here too.
FEMA actually, actually likes you to do your own monitoring.
They really do. And they, they, it used to be on paper and you had a clipboard and you took a camera and you just took pictures. Now they, they rent you an iPad. Isn't that nice?
Yeah.
For hundreds of thousands of dollars. And they give you all these iPads with their software. Is what it is, but it still works. Sales tax, capital improvements. Once again, this is the pass through for the hotel conference center. And then there's seven hundred and ninety-five thousand left over out of that quarter penny, which is about two point five billion dollars. So seven hundred and ninety-five goes over the, the one fifty-seven account where all that capital is at. And we put that four point four oh and five into eighty percent of it. And the rest is paid right here. Uh, three fifty is GEO bond debt service. This is just more accounting, accounting.
But the debt service is going down this year by almost seven million dollars, it looks like.
Yeah.
Does that mean we're not as in debt as we used to be?
Well, we're hitting the tax rules for that. As far as how that, we have, you have to be able to study that. We're looking at to get about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand. We set the ceiling for ourselves. And we set it at a ten mil. When that toll says we're doing more than ten mil, it got us fifty-one, eight million dollars. And as, you're right. So we pay this off and the values of houses is going up, right? Tax assessor never seen lower our value of our house. So it's going up. So you have this, this linear equation that then establishes where under that ceiling are you. So you have that ten mil ceiling and we'll probably have, and I'm gonna say, hmm, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five. We'll probably have eight hundred thousand to a billion dollars of ceiling versus where we're at. You know, here's the ceiling, airplane's right here. There's eight hundred thousand dollars to get an airplane up there. So what we do with that, I can tell you, from my perspective, we need to be preparing now for new GEO bonds. We need to prepare now. Cause it's crazy not to use.
I know where there's a list of things we've.
Well, it's not.
And there's ballparks and there's.
Well, but there's other things there. I know, just, we're gonna have a tattoo that says MAC on it.
I wanna finish it before I retire.
I know. We, we're gonna figure it back out. We need to figure it back out. We also have a YMCA set up there. We have, we have other, other things. We have communities, center, other things. So. Okay, well, make you go again next year, just for good luck. Um, okay, so, good question now. I have, I have some reports from the BOSC. It goes through the evaluation that creates the tables of where you get, where I get that. Three fifty-two, Sooner Rose Tip. Sooner Rose Tip is, is, uh, we, we subsidize Sooner Rose Tip out of the four twenty-five ninety fifty account, which is discretionary, economic development discretionary on the account. And the hospital authority will be there very, very quickly. But we're backstopping it at three hundred and twenty-four thousand and I, it was, when I took over, it was seven hundred thousand, went down to three twenty. It's getting lower and lower. We have some balance in there that we're saving for the next project that occurs over there. That will have a little bit of capital money, cause they always want us to put streets in and water and sewers. So we need to be prepared to do some of that. We can. I mean, I'd rather Robert to do it, but unless you just want to follow.
Oh, no, I don't want to see Robert.
You know, Chris Jow. Robert can. What's your only choice?
Again, I just have like somebody to provide us an actual plan of the last time it was the TSS original and they didn't.
Okay, so I will tell you that I know for a fact that they have a LOI where they're at on the contract with the building right next to Fuzzins, to the east. There's a contract. Replacing, um, Party Galaxy, they're working through a contract on it. The corner is not leased because they want a lot of money for that corner, but the one in between is, is leased now. I don't know if they have a contract, so we're in open meeting. It's appropriate to talk about it. But they do have a lease on that and they have, they have a tentative lease on the Party Galaxy. But outside of that. But as these come on, um, that number will go down. This tip, this, it's a successful tip. I can tell you the sales tax we're generating really is significant. Next, three fifty-three is the EDA. We just talked about economic development authority. This is where Sooner Town Center rent comes into, about one point two million dollars. There is item number forty-seven on Brandon's list. There's a loop for a twelve inch water line on northeast twenty-third. That is, is Centrillium. It helps with Centrillium. That's eighty-seven thousand. Skip entry signs for seventy thousand. And then eighty-eight hundred southeast twenty-nine. So there is some money there. And Mathis Home Reimbursement is there also. We're contractual. We do fireworks, Christmas lights, holiday events. Those are all economic development activities.
What is the Mathis agreement? Cause it wasn't on last year's budget, but.
Yeah, this is the first year that they wanted to pay that out, cause they had to, they had to operate for a year.
So we are just giving them ninety thousand dollars or?
It's a portion of the sales, it's a portion of their revenue that they create. They just have to generate X sales tax to get X dollars.
In return?
Robert have to go through all that, but, but it's not a sales tax rebate. I need to make that really clear. We don't do sales tax rebates.
Okay.
Based on performance on their sales, but it's not a sales tax rebate. This is a rebate on lease. We're not giving any sales tax. I mean, if that rumor's on the street, I'm gonna do spread that rumor. That is wrong. We are not doing that.
And it's just. And it's a one-year deal or?
About that, it's multiple years.
Okay, I'll email it back.
Um, and then, that's really, that's it for three fifty-three. And next is four twenty-five, finish up on four twenty-five. So ninety-ten is, is the compounded principal. We do have the Sooner Town Center two loan in there. That'll be something we'll be talking to you about as we build a big sporting goods location. I think we feel good about that's gonna happen. I just, it needs to occur in a second session and there's, we've been on this cover your side. But it's a good thing. It's a good thing, I promise you. Um, so the principals probably, I mean, what do we have right now? Ninety-eight? I bet it's two. Yeah. So we have about a hundred million. This money has to be used to either operate a hospital or for a hospital purpose. So that's where the money's coming from in your neighborhood to bring that back to life and build a park and.
Yeah.
The infrastructure. Um, so I put a little bit more money in the district just for contingencies and utilities. We're gonna have to replace all the utilities in there. So we put a little in there, but we need a little more. Other than that, we're not taking anything out of there. So we, and we still have some property that's far over there. Four twenty-five ninety fifty. And if you haven't been by there, twenty-eight twenty-eight, that corner is G O N E. A long fall asbestos is in it.
Do we eighty-six it?
It's fast.
It's been eighty-six.
It's, it's a while to get through that. But yeah, once we, it's a couple of days. Asbestos works a ton to get out of there. That's one less thing for Robert to manage. That's good. Four twenty-five ninety fifty is the discretionary account. That's where the two percent, of this two percent out of the hospital compounded principal. Seventy-five percent of that goes to this fund for economic development purposes. The other twenty-five percent goes for grants, which should be the last fund in here. So this is, this is our, doing our urban renewal. You're asking urban renewal where really that's, I don't know if you asked me that, but that, this is really where that is at.
On page one forty, land held for economic development. Three million four hundred. Thank you.
You're going to be go past tracks this year. Unless you all have any other questions on, on that. It's, I think everybody knows what we're doing there. Ninety-sixty. So this is the in lieu of ROR miscellaneous, really all it is. It really shouldn't say any of those things. What this is, is the rent from SSN. We get a million dollar fee here in rent. It has in lieu of taxes. Those are all old terms that go back to HMA, CHS, they don't talk to you, but anyway, that's the rent. Um, in the past, we didn't have capital improvement money. So you look at twenty-three, twenty-four and there's a five million dollars worth of stuff that came out here, because we didn't have any other place to pay for it out of. So now instead, we're over in twenty-four, twenty-five, the resurfaced, you're gonna have to remind me your question. But twenty, twenty-ninth street in front of Sooner Town Center, two hundred thousand. And that's, that's match money or is that engineering?
That's the beginning match.
Beginning match money. So we need to, we need that road to always be in really great condition. Cause that's where we make a lot of money. And then projects to be approved is just projects to be approved. It is, it is money that, for economic development, for, for cost over rents, for needs, for trying to keep the hospital related or economic development related. We can, but it's, it's just unallocated. Once we allocate it, it has to come back to you. It's not like there's five hundred thousand projects to be approved, you approved. I guess when that's not how this works, it will come back to you.
So, I'm sorry.
Okay, where were you at?
I, I'm the, in lieu of tax, you were in that same category. I just don't think I'm processing it right. So land held for economic development, it does not mean that there is land that we are preserving for future business endeavors, but rather it's land that we own that we are getting paid rents on, um, from St. Anthony's?
This is only for the hospital. We have to classify something on our books, so.
And we must have bought it out of this fund.
Right. So we would have bought it, maybe, for a hospital. So we have to classify somehow. Okay, well, some of the boxes may have to do something. So it's in that account. I'm trying to look it up now. Just to clarify that, so. Yeah, while you're looking at that, I'll, let me go through some of this, uh, especially for the new people. We have a consultant DC that helps us find brand money. I'll just go through the process of federal agencies. And his name's JR Estebak from Capital Solutions.
What I said, it's on our financial, we have.
So would it be, like, is it up for sale? Is it up for grab? Or are we just preserving it with the hopes of development in the future?
How is it going to be? It could be whatever the city decides to sell off, you know, who could sell to someone else? If, if we sold it, so it's all part of the, the big plan over there. All that land scattered, most of it's owned by the hospital, I believe. And so we're gonna develop that through that master plan. Some of that master plan, you just have housing and you have retail in there. So, you know, we could potentially sell some of that and do a cutback into these.
Mind to debauch?
But the consultant, that's what we pay him. He has brought us millions and millions of dollars. Hundred twenty thousands of black guy money in his, but he has, he has brought us a lot of.
It's not a lot of money in Washington DC.
No, in their world. And then, can that keep the real property? Right now, we're down to, I think, the women's renaissance. So that would be. And we continue to work on, we work on that. We're trying to, to work, uh, the women's renaissance, unfortunately, for the new people. So that was where babies were born and had to be listed for certificates. And a couple of months before our friends from CHS left us, they closed that women's renaissance, cause they weren't taking care of it. And they were, they made the doctors angry. They kind of deal with SSN and CHS just walked away from that building. And left it in a condition that it's, it's not for the condition, but if you were a doctor, you wouldn't be happy. The birthing suites are still all there. They, they are nice in their day and upgraded and upgraded. But SSN really kind of gave us two pathways to go. And one pathway is something our community doesn't have and it needs, and that was a pathway that they were doing downtown. And that's where they wanted to do that. I hope at some point, someone comes back there and delivers babies and then we have individual city babies. And the city babies then. But that's now all in open session. And finally, last but not least, is the grants. The OG grants this year are gonna be five hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. So that would, that's the twenty-five percent of the two percent discretionary. So that's the number that'll be there.
Is that the biggest it's ever been?
I don't think so. I think it's been higher than that.
Yeah, we've had some six hundred thousand.
It's pretty, it's still a lot of money. A lot of money to give away. Folks, that's all I got.
Remember what we talked about when we first started? Did you raise any questions?
Yeah, follow up with us with questions. And I gave you a lot of enticements to, I'll tell you about that later. Hopefully you wrote them all down. I love talking about this stuff. This is, La Crosse is our city.
So we'll actually vote to approve or disapprove of this budget in open session?
That's right.
And you can pick and choose. It's up and down.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have that now.
So what can we do to help clean up? So we all get out of here about the same time? So, what can we do to help clean up, so we all get out of here about the same time?
Are we, are we journeying?
We need to carry stuff upstairs or, come on, man.
Maybe there's no other, no other business for you.